2025, it is 5:59 PM. I will call this meeting of the Berry City Council to order. Council or manager, do you have any adjustments or additions to the agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things on the consent agenda. We're going to remove item 4E regarding the accepting a claim deed on the Brook Street property. We're going to do a little bit more diligence on the site itself. Expect to come back to you with some options for that, just because it's a little bit of a trickier location in the city. So we'll come back to you with that. There's no time sensitivity associated with it. And then, just for council's awareness and the public's awareness, I did send you a slightly revised item 4G, which is the resolution for the financial authorization of the treasurer. We had some typos that I fixed, and then we added a clause after talking to Carol, to make clear that this is all effective July 1 upon her appointment, not June 17, the date that you're approving it. So you saw the language, and I just want to clarify that that's included in what you would be approving as part of the consent agenda.
Yep. Noted. Anything else, council? Okay. Then we'll move on to visitors and communications. Anyone wishing to address the council regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Oh, Mr. Reel. How are you?
Good. How are you?
And I owe you a phone call.
Oh, no worries. Yeah, whenever you're ready. Yeah, so I just want to talk real quick about Berry Pride. So it was our fifth celebration this year. It's about a week and a half ago. We've grown quite a bit since we started. The first one, for people who don't remember, was a two-table bake sale in someone's backyard. So anybody who was here this year can attest that it's grown significantly since then. So we also want to mention that a big goal this year was to kind of expand beyond just being in the park. I mean, the park's great, but we want to be in the whole city. We did a lot of that this year. We had a bunch of local businesses who hosted different events, both in the week leading up and on the day. That was really great. We're going to try to do more of that next year. And as far as support from the community, we had more than 20 local businesses who contributed in different ways, and most of those, all but one or two, were in Berry City. So that was a huge, huge effort from the local community to kind of come out for us. But even with all that, the main event is still the park. It always will be. It was an amazing day. It was filled with joy and love and just everything. It was great. Nothing but positive vibes. So we just want to thank everybody who contributed in any way. There's a ton, way too many, to name, but we appreciate everyone. That's it.
Thank you. You did a great job. It was a lot -- it showed that it was a lot of work, but you did a great job.
Thank you. It was definitely a lot of work. There were six primary people on the committee, a few others kind of off and on, and it was a part-time job for six months without pay.
Awesome. Thank you.
But we loved doing that.
Mr. Mackenzie?
Yes.
Mr. and Mrs. Lozier, now would be a great time to steal his seat if you want to sit together.
Is there any way you can turn it up a little bit?
It actually doesn't amplify. It only goes over the web. It actually doesn't amplify to this room.
Well, I'm speaking right here. I'm hard of hearing. I'm not in your hearing.
No, I'll have to speak louder. That's all, Herb. But I'll make sure I do.
Chris can turn it up a tad over there, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Old men have hard times here.
That's an excuse, Herb. You just don't want to listen. I'm picking on you. Mr. Mackenzie?
Yeah, good evening, council. I'm here under visitor to give you a personal update on the fundraising initiative to, as you know, purchase the J.J. Newberry's building. If you recall, back in late November -- should have known. Back in late November, we acquired a six-month option to purchase the property from the current owners, and that was to conduct a campaign at that time. The purchase price for the building was $1 million. The campaign was to raise another $100,000 for post-closure costs and unforeseen expenses. We had 180 days to do that. 180 days expired on June 11. About seven to 10 days before June 11, I reached out to the owners and said, you know, we have $650,000. Is that enough? Find acceptable for us? And it was or not. $650,000 wasn't enough to acquire the property. I was very candid with them in saying I don't think that we can raise the $1 million and offered, subject to approval of the Board of Directors of Berry Area Development, a compromise amount of $800,000, which they accepted. And along with that was another 90 days to complete the fundraising. The 90 days expires on September 8, and we're now proceeding to raise that money. The amount that we have to raise, instead of 1.1 million, has been reduced, actually, by $250,000, down to $850,000. $50,000 of that being for post-closure expenses instead of $100,000. I don't think we'll need $100. But the sales price now is $800,000. We currently have, I think, as of this week, $725,000 in cash in hand or pledges. That means the balance to raise in 90 days is $125,000, which to me seems doable. And we will reach out. We are reaching out and have been reaching out to folks that haven't been contacted yet to see if we can't raise that money. I think we can. So to me, that's good news. I wanted to share that with the council, and we're continuing to work hard to raise that money and acquire the property.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Questions, council? Good job. Moving in the right direction, Steve. Thank you.
All good.
Sir, anyone else under -- oh, we got a few more. Shawna?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. There's a couple of new faces up here. If you don't know me, my name is Shawna Trader. Right now, I am here to promote the next Facing the Water event for Berry Up. Berry Up is the long-term recovery group for Berry City. We do a lot of work, but one of the projects we're cracking on right now is this community engagement and flood preparedness event called Facing the Water. We are doing it quarterly. We just completed our first one a month or so ago. We're repeating it on June 30. And each one is different, and we'll have new content and skills to learn. So if you've attended the first one, please come back and join us a second time. This time, we're going to be having tool time. We're going to get a little dirty. We're going to learn how to work a generator, work a pump, et cetera, real hands-on skills that can help mitigate flood damage in people's homes. And again, we'll be repeating this quarterly. And I invite you to check us out at berryup.org. And I do have some flyers, if applicable or appropriate. If I can hand those out, y'all are welcome to them. Thank you so much. Any questions?
So June 30?
June 30.
What time?
5:30 PM. We are serving dinner. It's at the Aldrich Public Library. It's down in the Milne Room, and we'll do a two-part show, one where we develop our flood superhero powers, and the second one will be the hands-on tool time that I mentioned. All right?
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, of course.
My name is Donna Drayman-Police. My husband, Jeff Police, and I are Berry citizens. And I am a little late in this request, but on June 28, it marks the 200th anniversary, 1825, that the Marquis de Lafayette came through Berry on his tour of all 24 states of the United States. He was a Revolutionary War hero who served as a general under George Washington. He came from France against the wishes of his king and brought with him a passion for liberty and freedom and was instrumental in helping us win our freedom from England. He was a huge celebrity. There were thousands of people when he landed in New York and began his tour of all 24 states. Thousands of people came out to meet him. He entered on the 28th in Windsor, Vermont, and he had to change fresh horses every 10 miles because the roads were so horrendous, which hasn't changed that much. But when he got to South Berry, he was given a fine coach and six white horses by Major Ira Day, who owned the tavern which stood across from where Hannaford is today. Just, he's one of my all-time heroes, and I wondered if -- I'm going to put an article in The Times, Argus, and The World, hopefully, to just bring it to people's attention of what a momentous occasion it was. And I don't know if there's any way we can fly a French tree-color flag in Berry, but it would be nice if we could do something to commemorate his travels through Berry on his way to Montpelier, where he stayed overnight. And there's a marker, you probably know, on the Berry Pond Bookstore building, on the corner of the building, that commemorates his overnight stay there. Not at Berry Pond Books, but there was a fine house there where he stayed overnight. Then on his way to Burlington, where he laid the foundation, the cornerstone at University of Vermont and the old Mill Building. And then on his way, we were the last state that he visited, and then on his way to New York and back to Paris. So I don't know if we're allowed to fly the flag of another country. Can we fly it? Do we just have one flagpole?
We actually have three, ma'am. And by protocol, as long as the flag of the United States is highest, and it always is.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Booten?
We have a charter change. We had a charter change three years ago that we can only fly the U.S. POW and state flags. Or city. City, thank you.
City flag.
City, state, and POW flag.
Yeah. Well...
But I got a comment.
Figure something out.
If I can provide a flag, a large flag, could it be suspended somewhere and, you know, in commemoration? I know it's only like 10 days away or so, but is there something we -- could we hang it somewhere, you know, over the city hall, or is there another place?
Maybe you could hook it onto the Aldrich Public Library's little, you know, the little area that's over the, you know, it has that balustrade.
Yes.
I don't know if you can actually get out there, but talk to Kristin and see, because I think there wouldn't be an issue with flying it on something that isn't city property.
Some other building.
Councilor Guston?
Sure. I think unfortunately, the charter change is extremely restrictive in this manner, and we cannot fly it anywhere on any city property or anything like that. This was one of the arguments that people made, arguing against that charter change was exactly really cool opportunities like this. However, actually, the first thing at work I'm going to do tomorrow morning is put out some objects related to Lafayette's visit. So there is actually some really cool statewide celebrations going. They are going to be making -- they're doing a bus tour in the path of that Windsor to Montpelier trip, and they are going to be making a stop in Berry. So there will be occasion for a small ceremony or a small sort of check-in here in Berry. I'm very happy to put you in touch with the organizers of that tour. I'm afraid I don't know, remember if they have a website right now.
Yeah. I've been searching for something else happening. I know Montpelier has a speaker coming, but it's kind of hush-hush.
It's like the tail end.
I'm trying to keep it small.
Yeah, it's the tail end of that whole day tour that they're doing. They're taking a bus on the trail that Lafayette himself took, and they are going to stop here in Berry to sort of, as you say, he changed to his final carriage at Ira Day's house, who changed his wallpaper for the occasion, and then Lafayette never went inside. So that was a bummer for him, but he saved a piece of it, and it's now in the collections. So I just want, that is an opportunity that is available for the city to commemorate that visit. Unfortunately, I don't think the flag, although Councilor Harold Gartner's suggestion is an interesting one for the library. But there will be another opportunity for us to celebrate if we can share information with that.
That would be fantastic. Are you saying that the library is off limits, or it's possible that...
It's separate property, so it could be, it could be possible. You'd have to reach out to them directly.
It's not city property.
It's not?
Yeah.
All right. What, how can I get that information from you?
Let me write me down your email address, and I'll pass it over. Or you can find me on the, you know, find me on the city website. It's a.guston@berrycity.
I'll do that.
You can reach out to me, and I'll make that connection for you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Where was the tavern in South Berry, you said, across from...
It's across from, just before you get to Hannaford.
Okay.
It's on the right. It's just before the intersection across from, it's just before Hannaford on the right is where historically that tavern was. It was a large...
That's interesting.
It was a big thing.
I think it's still the same building. It just doesn't look anything like it used to.
I don't know if there's a building there. I've kind of tried to find it.
The park and ride is?
Before that. Before that.
It's a little before the park and ride lot. Yeah.
Do you have something to add?
And I don't know where he came up with six white horses, but it was quite the thing. Kind of wrapped up his, you know, journey.
So the council doesn't meet again until July, unfortunately. This event would be the 28th. But obviously, you're very passionate about this subject and incredibly knowledgeable. So if you'd like to draft a mayoral proclamation, I'd be happy to sign it for you.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, because I think it is something that should be commemorated. I mean, the Marquis de Lafayette was, I mean, he was pivotal in terms of the turning of the war.
Yes, he was. And I think nowadays, too, we need reminders of what it takes to create and protect democracy and freedom, and he was a perfect, they called him the hero of two worlds. He did the same thing for France, although didn't work out quite as well. But anyway, I thank you, and I will get you a proclamation statement, if I may.
Thank you, of course. Yeah, my home number and email address is right on the city webpage. And feel free, please, use either or or both.
Okay. Thank you so very much for hearing this.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in.
Five people online.
Yep. Jeremy?
Hi, thank you. My understanding was that the original pledge to BADC to purchase the Main Street property was conditioned on a, I believe it was June, I don't remember the date, deadline. It seems like BADC is operating on the belief that that deadline is no longer part of the agreement with the city, not with the property owners. Has city council revisited that pledge, that agreement at all?
We have not.
Okay. So I would presume that as of right now, unless further action takes place, the city's pledge is now null and void, because it's past the deadline that the city agreed to when it originally made that pledge.
I think that's an awfully big leap.
Passing a deadline?
Yep.
What?
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, you're willing to make that concession. I'm not necessarily, because I haven't looked at the agreement.
Contracts doesn't allow you to blow past deadlines, right?
Yeah, and I don't recall a, I don't recall a deadline in the city council.
Yeah, correct. Okay, we can revisit that, I guess. Well, someone will, I would assume.
Or not.
Lawyer at some point. Thank you.
You're welcome. Erica?
Tommy skipped over me.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. You're, yeah, you've got a, didn't you see the hand? Sorry about that.
Okay. Hi, Ellen K., Berry City. Yeah, I had some, a similar question and then another comment. So $400,000 is now what we, what the city pledged, and I recall a contingency that it had to be by a certain date as well. But what we pledged is now half of the asking price. Is that correct?
Yes. $400,000 is 50% of $800,000. Yes.
Yes, I do know that math. So I just wanted to have that clarified, that we are now bankrolling half of that project, and I'm just going to leave that comment here. The other comment is just a little bit of history about the flag ordinance, which I was part of helping craft because I was on the, what is now called the JIB or the Diversity and Equity Committee. This flag ordinance was brought as a response to hanging the Black Lives Matter flag for 30 days in the middle of the movement for people's lives. And instead of allowing that to happen and allowing more diversity in what we celebrate in this city, Councilor Booton brought a charter change, put it before the voters, and this is why we cannot hang a French flag or any other kind of flag in this city. And I think it's very unfortunate, but I wanted people to understand the history of why that has come to be. It was so threatening to have a Black Lives Matter flag stand with black people as they watched their friends and relatives and neighbors get murdered, and people stood by the millions with them, and all we did was hang a flag for 30 days, and we now have a law, a charter change, that says we cannot appreciate anything else but those three flags.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Erica?
Yeah, I was the counselor who had the Black Lives Matter flag fly in the city, and that's why we had the charter change. So I just want to make it public that I was the counselor who had made the ordinance change for the reason we don't have diversity in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Joellen?
This is a little bit more mundane. I just wanted to ask Councilor Guston if the collection that was given to them from the Berry collection at the Aldrich Public Library included the cushion that Lafayette sat on in the carriage as he went to New York.
I am going to have to follow up. We have 30,000 items in the collection, and that one's not on the top of my head. So I'm going to have to follow up with you directly when I'm at work tomorrow and check in on that. I know we have a couch he sat in on Montpelier. I do not recall the cushion from the carriage. Thank you for asking.
They're really important in where they sat. Thank you.
Yeah.
Raylene?
I just wanted to say that I would be willing, if they can figure out the mechanism, they can hang it on the front of 185 North Main out of the second-story windows if they would like to.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else under visitors and communications? No, thanks. Council will move on to the consent agenda, and as we strike or add items, obviously, I'll re-letter them if we add, but when we strike, just to make it easier for you to follow along, I won't re-letter everything. Is that, I don't know if I've made that clear in the past. Is that okay? Just so it's easier for you to follow along. So we'll be approving the minutes of 6:325. Will be, I believe the clerk does have some office licenses and permits.
I do have one.
Go for it.
It is Faith Community Church and Enough Ministries combined would like to hold a function or an event at Courier Park on Sunday, July 6, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It has been reviewed by all department heads and approved by all department heads.
Thank you very much. Council will be ratifying the council's 6:325 motion to approve a TIF substantial change application to VEPSC. We'll be approving the option agreement with Downstreet for the Seminary Street parking lot that was in your packet. We'll be appointing the city treasurer. You had both the original and an amended resolution in your packet as well. We'll be approving Resolution 2025-11, which is the financial authorization of the Berry City Treasurer. We'll be approving the annual appointments. That list was in your packet as well. We'll be assigning the excess fund balance, which I'm going to ask the manager to explain in a moment, and we will be authorizing the manager to execute contracts. Sir, would you mind just giving us the 411 on the fund balance? It's always of interest to folks.
Absolutely. So this is something, it's cyclical to this time of year as we're coming to the end of the fiscal year. So the city charter allows the city to retain 5% as an undesignated fund balance, basically a rainy day fund, which has come in very, very handy the last couple of years because we've had cash to address our flooding costs. So what we're asking the council to do today is two things. One is to formally allow us, the charter requires the council's approval for us to retain that 5%, so that's what we're asking you to do tonight, which is allow us to keep that 5%, which this year comprises of $743,000. And we are asking you to, you know, Dawn does a good job basically with our projections to see where we'll be at the end of the year. Those numbers don't get really finalized and solid until further into the year as bills can still come in. So what we're asking you to do with any funds above that 5% is two things, is to allocate 50% of them to the capital improvement fund and 50% of them for property tax relief for the following fiscal year. So we think this is a measured response, a measured balance to both address our capital needs, but also use any excess funds as the way they're intended to in the charter, which is to help pay down tax increases in the subsequent year. So we are projecting right now that the fund balance may be in excess of 1.3 million. That's, it sounds like a big number, but a lot of that is carryover from before. We've gotten some FEMA reimbursements. That's helping the cash situation as well. We also, these are, these are reserves we would choose not to have. These are, these come from vacancies in the police department and the planning department so, and DPW. So we would rather not have this money to allocate in this way. We would rather have people in these positions to do these jobs. So, but it's the reality of where our finances are. Like I said, the fund balance has really helped us not have to borrow money for flood expenses. So we're asking for, that's what, the two things we're asking you to do today with this motion.
Any questions about that item, council? Look, I'd rather have 1.3 million than not, I guess. That's all I'll say. Yes?
Is there any way that we might be able to apply some of that for signing bonuses to try to get, to attract new people?
We can in some respects. It has to be negotiated usually with the union, so that's one, that's one barrier to it. But we've been successful with it in the police department. The chief has had an uptick. We've had three or four chief candidates come through with the signing bonus. Four? Three, four? It's right in there.
Four.
Four. So, yeah, so that's been an area where we've been able to make some progress working with the union and being able to get people in the door.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, how many recruits currently in the academy? Two?
We have two that just graduated. One's in field training, and the other is released from field training effective Saturday to 27.
Fantastic. Nice job. Any other questions regarding any other items on the consent agenda? Yes?
Would you like to make a motion before we discuss?
Sure.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And is there a second? Thank you. Moved and seconded. And your question?
I have a couple of questions. For the minutes, I just have one spelling correction under roundtable for Councilor Ruth Year. It says, "Thank you to the manager and the major," and I think it was just a, it should be a Y instead of a J. So very, very small correction. And then I have a question about the annual appointments. There are a number of vacant spots. Energy Coordinator is vacant. We have two Central Mount Regional Planning Commission and Central Mount Planning Commission TAC positions that are vacant. We have CV Fiber and CV Fiber Alternate that are vacant. And then there's statutory body appointments, which are vacant, two at-large seats. A seat on the Planning Commission is vacant. And then there's vacant seats on committees. Cemetery Committee, there are two vacant seats. Justice, Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, and Belonging, we have three vacant seats. One is, one is just a regular vacant seat for a community member, and the other two are student seats. And then three on Parks and Rec and two. I have a question about police advisory. I thought, there's two vacant seats, but I thought Bob Nelson was on that?
He was. He's stepping down. These are your appointments for...
Next year.
Next year, and Bob hasn't, has, Bob's term expires on June 30, and he chose not to reapply.
Okay. And then one on transportation and public works. So my question is, I just want to bring some attention to those vacant positions. How do we get people into the ones that are appointed, that are not appointed by necessarily the council, like the Energy Coordinator? Or how do we get people to apply even for the Central Mount Regional Planning Commission and those sorts of things?
Sure. So most of these, I think the Energy Coordinator, I don't know if there has been a staff appointment So most of these, I think the Energy Coordinator, I don't know if there has been a staff appointment since I've been here. I think that's just someone we could designate.
Wasn't me.
Was that, that's why we don't have one. Yes. So we can make a staff appointment there. And that can, that, I believe I can do that, and we can have it ratified if that's the case. The other positions, councillor do, so the, the non-committee appointments that you mentioned, like CV RPC and CV Fiber, still do require councillor approval. I believe councillor Guston was our CV Fiber representative. We do advertise for all of these. We advertised in, I don't remember the dates, but sometime in March or April, when the whole cycle for reappointments kicked off again, we listed all of these vacancies on the website, Facebook, and in the paper. We, yeah, it's been a struggle to get people to come in. I'm trying to think, we've only had maybe a handful of new applicants come through. One of them was Starla Comte, who was here a couple of weeks ago, and she was actually, she had been on the committee, was off, and then came back. And then a couple on the Justice Equity Diversity Inclusion and Belonging Committee actually are some of the new folks as well. So it's, yeah, it's a matter of, you know, using, talking to your networks, getting the word out, if there's people, I believe I saw Amy Galford hop on. I think she was coerced into joining the Central Vermont Solid Waste Management District, pressured, coerced. So it's really that. It's talking to people you know, encouraging them to sign up. We've changed the municipal bodies and appointments policy to make it a lot easier to appoint people throughout the year. So we have to do this now because it's effective July 1. But we can come back two weeks from now if we have somebody who can take these seats and, and I can put them on the agenda for you, so.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. And then my last question is about the Library Trustee Council Liaison, which is listed as Teddy Wazazak. And I love Teddy.
Oh, yes.
He's not on the council anymore, so should we have a new council liaison, is my question?
We should. And you know what? That's, I'm sorry, that's, I thought it was a library trustee liaison. I didn't, I misread that. I didn't know how to be a councillor. But yeah, we should probably change that one up.
So maybe we, should we just delete that and have it be vacant for now?
You can either, you can make an appointment today, and we can, these appointments will be posted on the website as they are amended tonight.
Okay. Is there someone who wants to do it?
God, I hate myself, but yes.
You will?
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
So we will substitute.
Teddy, Amanda for Teddy.
Councillor Guston for the councillor formerly known as Wazazak. Go from there.
Thank you for your patience. I appreciate that.
Need a motion for that?
Motion was made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Are there any other questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much, councillor. Councillor will move on to item 4A. We'll be approving the city warrants for the week of 6/1825 and ratifying the week of 6/1125. Motion would be in order. Thank you. And a second, please. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
And I'm abstaining.
Not, extension is noted.
And myself as well, please.
I'm sorry?
I'm abstaining as well.
Okay. Two abstentions are noted. We still have four votes, so we're good.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to item five on the agenda. This is the City Clerk and Treasurer's report. Still City Clerk and Treasurer until July 1.
Until July 1. Welcome back, Carol.
Not yet, Carol. Effective July 1.
July 1. So with the new fiscal year just around the corner, the Clerk's office is, we're waiting for the education tax rates to be published from the state, and we will be working with the council and setting municipal tax rates. In addition with working with our programmer, Nemrick, the New England Municipal Resource Center, and L. Brown, all combined in one day, we hope, after the tax rate has been set, to get all of that done so we can get the bills out with a due date of, excuse me, August 15th. So we're hoping to have them out in the mail by, or before July 15th. Secondly, I'm still going to push the Green Mountain Passport Program. We had four individuals come in the week after the first council meeting where I had announced it. So it is a good program for seniors, 62 and older, or any military veterans. You come in and there is a $2 application fee, but beyond that, you are issued a card which allows free entrance to state parks throughout the state of Vermont and some historic sites throughout the state of Vermont. It is a lifetime membership. It can be replaced if it's damaged or lost. So please just give us a call or come into the office, fill out that application, and you have that ability to have fun in the summer, winter, fall. So, yeah, that is my, my words from the Clerk's office.
Thank you. Any questions, folks? Okay, we'll move on. We'll call the Liquor and Cannabis Control Board to order. I believe you have one application.
I have one, yes. The Corey, they are applying or renewing their first class, third class, and outside consumption. It has been cleared by both Nick Cupping and Bradley.
Chief Vale.
Chief Vale, sorry.
Him too.
Him too, yep. And so I asked that you approve that renewal for them.
Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Liquor and Cannabis Control Board is adjourned. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates for the council. You probably noticed on the way in, Merchants Road got striped today. They did a great job, so that project is all wrapped up. So thank you, the merchants all along here, really cooperative with a lot of disruptions for both them and their customers. And so we're glad that's completed and it looks great out there. Allen Street has been prepped. As I said, we have Allen Street, Prospect Street, Berlin Street this year. We're still working on the final projects to add with the 130,000. And we expect the rest of the paving to be started by September. I'm looking at Brian, and possibly a window in late July, but definitely by September, these projects will be underway. So our crews are getting things ready to go. There may be, you know, some disruptions until we get the pavers here, but they are, you know, they are, we're really excited about getting all of these, these streets paved. They certainly need the attention. I shared with the council that we got some, you know, some good news. I want to caveat it because it's, there's a long ways to go to the end. But Senator Welch's office notified us that two city mitigation project grants were awarded through their office. One was for the Berlin Street Bridge removal, 1.785 million, and one's for the Willie Street Bridge restructuring. That's for 2.077 million. This is not money in the bank. This is still a long ways to go. This has to go to the Full Senate Appropriations Committee. This has to be passed by the Full Senate, by the Full House. So I don't need to tell you that this is a, you know, there's, there's a long way before we count any of these dollars towards these projects. But it's just, you know, it's a, we've sort of put our eggs in a lot of baskets, as we were advised by Vermont Emergency Management with the uncertainty of federal funding. And so it was, you know, nice of Senator Welch's office to advocate for these projects. But like I said, doesn't change their status anyway. It's just a, you know, something we can hopefully keep working on. And then finally, I want to welcome Michelle Labarge Burke as the REC Coordinator. Michelle's name's possibly familiar for many people. She has been our permanent administrator since March of 2023. She, you know, she's very excited to transition to this role. You know, I heard councillor loud and clear during the last budget cycle about the need to have a solution to the REC issues, which I agreed with. And we had some, some staffing changes that allowed us to use some funding to fill that role. So she's going to handle all the scheduling and rentals of the Civic Center. She's going to do a REC program. She has some great ideas for that. And she's also going to assist with cemetery software. We're moving to a more computerized system. Right now, it's all on paper. And so she's going to really help us transition to that as well. She starts July 1, and so we're very excited that she'll be here. She'll be helping us manage the pool as well, which is opening on Friday, June 20th. So make sure you get down to the pool. It's supposed to be very warm for day one of the season. So that is it for me. Thank you.
Any questions, folks?
I have a question.
Yes, of course.
Were we able to figure out anything for the crosswalk, or potential crosswalk on Allen and Prospect? Even having a small landing or something so we?
I talked about it, we haven't got it planned yet. I did talk about it last week. It's still possible, but it's been working out.
And as long as we're picking on Brian. So on Hill Street, Love the Habitat Project, don't get me wrong, but they installed their utilities recently, and there's a trench that goes the entire width of Hill Street. It's settled, and settled in a big way. I mean, when you, there's no missing it. Well, sidewalk, but even I won't do that. Yeah. So if they could just, somebody needs to give it a little attention tomorrow. That would be great before I forget. And folks, those of you who are standing, this big comfy chair is here. Don't be shy. Just run up and grab one. You don't have to, you don't have to stand. It's up to you. Okay, councillor will move on to item 8A on the agenda. This is the Heart of Berry Project presentation.
All right, good evening again. This is Shawna Trader.
Hi, I'm Deirdre Michelle. And we're here to share with you about the Heart of Berry Project. And thank you for your time very much. The Heart of Berry is an overarching, an overarching look at the floods of 2023 and 2024 in the Berry area from the perspectives and personal stories of those who experienced them. Members of our community, from those whose homes were impacted to those who stood beside them in aid. By looking with an open and gentle heart, we sought to find ways the community is present in times of transition of trauma. The journey of listening and recording those stories has opened us to a greater understanding of what it means to be a neighbor. It started with my desire to give the best to those around me, using my art to share the experiences of others through visual storytelling. It seems, it seemed like a crazy idea at first, so I reached out to Shawna Trader to kind of see if it would work for the city of Berry, this idea I had. And that was in December 2023. After two years of collaboration together, we now would like to come here and invite you to the ribbon cutting ceremony that will be happening in July. And we'd love to have all of you available to that, possibly. The, the whole piece of the project consists of eight, it's an 80 by 80 painting, which consists of 20 individual pieces. You can see here, those are 20 individual canvases, and they all come together to create a community so that the, the individual, individual pieces become one, just like we hope for our city as we all work together. It includes thoughtful and heartfelt support pieces of poetry, biographies, and the thoughts on lessons gleaned from the creative process. And then two 80 by 80 pieces. It is designed to highlight the individual stories that make us a community and build strength for our future together. Now it's Shawna.
Good job.
Cool. Thank you so much for that introduction, Deirdre. Yeah, so actually, can we back up, Nicholas?
Because we have a celebrity here, I just wanted to point out. Can you go, step forward a second here and step forward again? Yeah, we really want to focus on that. That person in the right corner. And also on the left, too, because actually, in a minute, I'll read a poem based on the interview of the woman on the left, who is, and who's the ED of Mosaic here in Berry, and lost her home and her home and her place of business here in Berry City in 2023 floods. And then, of course, we have our Nicholas. So before we get to the poem, a little bit about what we've learned. We've learned a lot about what our residents believe to be elements of strong community. But what does that word even mean, "community"? Unfortunately, we hear it so often and are told we need it so much, but good examples are hard to find. Heart of Berry has taught us a little bit about that, too. The word "community" is rooted in the Latin "communis." If a word is a sip of wine, this word has notes of things shared by all, of place and beliefs held in common, fellowship. It is the measure of the togetherness of the people that use the word. It's actually not so easy to define in words, but extraordinarily easy to identify in deeds. It's what we do to each other. It's how we live near each other. And that word, "near," it's another important piece of this linguistic puzzle. Near is the "ne" in neighbor. A neighbor is simply someone that lives near you. And yet, a good neighbor in an anemic community is hard to find. Good community builds good neighbors, and good neighbors build great community. We have seen great community here in Berry. There is a long history of dedicated people giving their hearts, souls, and bodies here because they believe in Berry. In some cases, especially in our own North End, still healing and wounded trauma, that dedication was lived every day by the working-class families that looked out for each other. They raised each other's kids. They knew each other's names. They shared a place, and so they shared a purpose. They gave care, and they were taken care of. Never fear an introduction, that would be my advice. Sometimes the seed of relationship is planted with a little wave or a, "How's it going? Gooden you?" Know that you are valuable, even in a land that shows no evidence of that to be true. Know that you are worthy of kindness. Know that you are able to receive just as easily as you give. In doing this, we all know "community." And when we get to that forgotten land, we will cry tears of gratitude, knowing where we came from, what it took to get there, and who we met along the way that made it possible. The Heart of Berry is an attempt to honor those people, us, that speak and take action and care enough to fight for what we deserve. A just and resilient Berry we can all call home. And now I'd like to read you a sample of the poetry that will be displayed in the project as well. It's called "May We Never Be the Same Again," and as I mentioned earlier, it's inspired by the story of Anne. I turn the pages of this book. The little braille bumps speak to my touch. I read in this house of pain what's left when the river of story crashes down and fills us up. The children of my body, my home, some here and some moved on. I held them up over my head and kicked furiously the torrent below. They will feel, but I will shield. I will stretch out and carry them into the next chapter. My hands move quickly over the words, the small stones that form the riverbed, the language of what's unspoken. The grief make, the grief makes islands of us. The grief of my children hammers my pain into a pinhead. Our grief is thunderous, but our togetherness outweighs it all. We don't fall. We don't fall. We may never be the same again, but we stand together, bound like these leaves, a spine of cedars and water where it shouldn't be be damned. It's still me. This book I tend and these pages I possess. Where is my permission in a city where the flood is king? Where is my sacred story untouched by abuse? I crave the preservation hidden in the marrow of permission. The first child returns with a shovel and a smile. I remember the shared work of mucking basements, of growing up together, the cool of our grace defying time and the cruelty of displacement. Under this tree I rest. We are worthy. We are worthy. Every one of us is worthy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to talk to you now without notes. I'm much better this way. So we, I already kind of alluded to inviting you to the ribbon cutting. So this project has been a monumental thing for me. It's taken two years of my studio time, and it's been such a blessing in so many ways, getting to know my neighbors and getting to know my city, and allowing people to have their voice and tell their story. And it really has been a buoy in a time that seems hard, getting to know these people. And the opening will be in Heritage Festival on the 24th of July at 4 o'clock on Main Street in front of Nelson's Hardware, because the whole project, which is two 80 by 80 pieces and probably about 25 pieces of support material, which will be poetry, like the one Shawna just shared with us. And we are working on putting little QR codes on that support material so you can actually hear the person's interview or a portion of their interview and hear their voice. So not only will you see the images that I've constructed and see the words that Shawna has constructed about their stories, you'll hopefully hear their voice. So you get this really all-inclusive idea of what their experience with the flooding is, whether it's the city manager and having to deal with all of the facets of that, or it's the person who it's the person who potentially maybe has no home in our city and how they dealt with that. So I really tried to reach a broad, together, we tried to reach a broad spectrum of people within our city. So I'd like to invite you to that opening. And then from the, the big news is from Ace Hardware, it is going to the State House for five months. So for five months, from September to January, this, the voices of our neighbors will be speaking to the people coming through the State House and telling the story of our city. And we'll be there in the beginning of the legislature. Hopefully, it will help some of those things go through by people really seeing really the bare story of our neighbors and our city. And then after that, the entire project will be installed in the Aldrich Library in February of 2026, and it will stay there forever. So this entire project is being given to the city, and it will live in the library, and the city has paid nothing for it. And I'm really, really happy that this is something that I could do, and I hope that you would honor the stories by being at that ribbon cutting and at the Heritage Festival. So these, I'm going to give to Tom to hand out to you guys afterwards, and this is invitation at all the dates of everything we know already. The only date that's not on here is for the library, and that'll be in February, but we have to determine exactly where that will be, because it will also be a book launch of all of the work and all the poetry, and the proceeds of the book is going to Berry Up and the Aldrich Library. So yeah, it's just a feel-good thing for everybody to be part of. Yeah. Thank you for your time. Is there any questions, or?
I'll just add that we're on Instagram at heart underscore of underscore Berry if you want to see pictures and updates and stuff like that. And we do have an email at heartofberry@gmail.com.
And we're always looking for people who want to help us do.
Yep.
Yeah. Because we have no city funding and we got, we got no grants. So we're always looking for people to help. We did get one very generous, one of my patrons actually gave a very generous gift, which goes through the library. So if anybody's interested in supporting in any way, we do have a fiduciary sponsor who will help make your, your gift a tax deductible thing. So yes.
It says save the dates, October 3rd, four through seven. What's October 3rd?
October 3rd is the, October 3rd is the artist reception at the State House.
Oh, okay.
So, and that will also be a recording part of Beth, Bess O'Brien's new documentary, which she has included our work in. So the city is getting a lot of really good press with this, and I'm working really hard to also bring people to the opening. I'm going to invite, I have a press release, I would like it to get the, the eyes of a lot of people, because it's not my work so much, it's our story that I'm trying to promote, because I think that's really important. Yeah.
Fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again so much.
I appreciate you. Okay, counsel, we'll move on to item eight B on the agenda. This is the volunteer appointments. Those were both in your packet. We're making those to the Justice, Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee. So any, are both applicants?
I think they're both online, Sean and Chris.
Chris, you somewhere?
He's on the left. I'm sorry.
Oh, there you go. Chris, how are you?
Good. How are you, Mr. Mayor?
Doing well, thank you.
Good to see you. Good to see all the counselors. Yeah, I'm back for another year term. I'm currently chair of the committee. I want to thank the Heart of Berry for a really lovely, moving presentation and emphasizing the importance of diversity, but, you know, including all members of the community. And, you know, it's not as if what we do in Berry isn't important. I, so since some of you saw our yearless city manager quoted in the Washington Post recently about the floods, and I, and then, of course, the flooding itself, I well remember the day after the 2023 flood, going on my phone to look at the New York Times, and on the picture, you know, that came up was Nelson Hardware. So we are, we're important here, and what we do is important. I think what we do on the J D B is very important. I think just the fact that we exist is a good thing. And the need for us is kind of manifest. You can look to the J D B itself. We are comprised right now of six men, no women. I'll let that speak for itself. I, I never thought, I was, I had the good fortune of going to McGill to pursue my graduate law degree in air and space law. And I never, I, my specialty is accident investigation. I never thought that an airline accident would be blamed on diversity and equity. I find that incredible, no matter what your political beliefs or persuasion are. So I, I think we have a long way to go, but we're doing the work. I, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to achieve some good results from a project we're working on, where we're examining city ordinances for, you know, from the perspective of diversity and equity. We've got some other projects in the pipeline, so I'm excited. I'm looking forward to the future, and I would ask for your vote to continue the work we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I also want to endorse Sean. And I think he'll do a fabulous job.
Thank you. Counsel, questions or a motion would be in order.
I make a motion to appoint Christopher Roberts to the J D B committee.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions for Chris? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Welcome aboard, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, counsel.
Okay, counsel, we'll move on to.
I didn't do Sean.
I'm sorry?
I didn't do Sean. I only did Chris.
Nope, I realize that. So we're moving on to Sean.
Sorry.
As I was saying, Sean is on the, Sean is on the upper left-hand corner of the Hollywood Squares this evening. Sean, welcome. Floor is yours. Feel free to address the council and talk about your interest in the committee.
Well, I am a Gen X member of the LGBTQ community, and I just feel there's something I should do to give back to my community. I've never been on a committee before. I've never done anything like this, and I think it's time for me to step up and be an adult.
Thank you. And have you attended any of the meetings, Sean?
I have attended a couple, yes.
You have? And so you're aware, question I ask all new appointments, so you're aware of the requirements in terms of the time requirements, time that it takes to be an effective and efficient member of the committee, and you're prepared to meet those requirements?
I am.
Fantastic. Counsel, a motion or questions would be in order.
It's moved.
It's moved to appoint. It's moved and seconded to appoint. Any other questions for Sean? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, welcome aboard, Sean. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, we will move on to item eight C on the agenda. This is adopting the flood resiliency plan. Counsel, Augustin.
Mayor, I'm happy to go, but I also am looking at our next item and knowing that we warned it for 7:00 PM, and I would be happy to wait if you would rather move to that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Entirely up to you.
Yeah, no, no, no. Why don't, why don't we do that if you don't mind? Counsel, we're going to move on to a first reading of the public conduct ordinance that has been warned for 7:00 PM. It is now 7:00 PM. Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Thank you. And let me just pull up the, no, no, that's fine. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counsel Augustin, for the skipping you here in the agenda. And you had in the packet a draft, a revised draft. We're in a first reading again for a couple of reasons. One is we did make some significant tweaks, as you saw, and also I hadn't published it after the first reading, which is required under ordinance. I hadn't done so because we knew it was changing, and that turned out as a requirement anyway, so we're back at a first reading, no matter what we had done. So I just have, you know, some table setting. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these because we've, we've done some of these presentations. We did some of these slides when Chief Vale was here in May to give an update on some police activity, but this is just sort of a rundown of what we've observed, right? There's, there's quality of life issues. This is some of what, what they mean. It's vandalism, it's littering, it's suspected drug use and activity, it's open containers and smoking. I, you know, I like to remind everyone, this is not, we're talking, not talking about violent issues when we talk about the crime in Berry. The chief has shown that to us in the data. These are like really quality of life nuisance issues. They're not to be minimized, but I do like to have that perspective when we talk about these issues. Again, not going to spend too much time here, but we've talked before, this is not only Berry's problem, this is something everybody else is confronting, probably not just in Vermont, but probably many other places in the country. It's, it's, it's not localized to our community. You know, the people's perceptions on the increase is backed by the data, so this is not people imagining quality of life issues. They are, our police department reporting validates it, and it's, we're seeing it show up. This is a, this is a repeat of the data. We haven't updated this data from May, but what it shows you is we've consistently seen upgrades. The low bars are the quarter one of 2025. They tend to be lower in the first quarter because that's, the people not outdoors as much as, I'm sure if the chief started to run this now, we would start to see some of those spikes. We can certainly do that down the road, but the idea here is to show you, you know, you can see from the three-year average to 2024, which is the blue bar to the gold bar, things had been trending in the wrong direction, unfortunately. And, and we're seeing, you know, similar indicators even in quarter one of this year, even though they're low, they're, they're higher, high compared to, you know, what we had seen in the three-year average before. We also tend to have frequent and repeated police contacts with the same individuals. We had in 2024, our eight highest repeat offenders accounted for 367 Berry City Police Department contacts. So that is to say that on any given day of the year, our police department dealt with one of those individuals. If we look at this data, this is again data from May, but trending this data out for a whole year, the current eight most repeat offenders in 2025 would be projected to have 368 contacts. So one additional contact is to say that things aren't getting better. We're seeing this, this is to show you on the EMS side that we're seeing it with, you know, the drug issues as well. This correlates somewhat to the drug issues. It's not a perfect correlation, but increase in EMS and the, and Chief Kushman will, will say to us that, you know, share with us that they are having higher volume of calls on overdoses, suspected overdoses, people just sleeping it off. But that is also reflected in the data we are seeing in the, on the fire side. We've tried to have a, you know, a holistic response to this. Our, our mission, our goal in our response is to both show empathy for those in need of medical attention, mental health supports, food, water, and other services, but we also have the balance, and the balance is the recognition that we have an obligation to the other residents of the city to provide safe places, clean places to recreate and use with their families free from those nuisances. That's what our, that's what our direction has been. That's what our, that's how we've worked with the police, fire department, all our departments, public works gets involved, facilities gets involved. That is our, our goal as a team. TESS obviously is part of that as well. The way we've effectuated that is we've increased directed patrols by the police department to known hotspots of these quality of life complaints. So that includes the core downtown, City Hall Park, areas around the churches where people tend to receive some of these services, People's Health and Wellness. And, and our focus is on alleged criminal complaints, right? So I like to remind people at this point in the presentation that hanging out in a park is not illegal. Smoking in a park is illegal. Drinking a beverage in a park in a non-sanctioned alcohol event is illegal. Hanging out at the park is totally fine. If you're eating your, you know, if you pick up a meal at a church and you're eating it at the gazebo, totally legal, right? It's, what we're talking about is criminal, alleged criminal complaints that are the issue. We've installed security cameras, we're in the process of installing security cameras. We've, we received approval for them, and we have placed portable toilets in discreet public locations that are communicated to members of, you know, people who need these services. We've increased trash pickups by facilities and ground staff. That's nothing minimal. That takes somebody away from mowing, it takes somebody away from pool preparation, it takes somebody away from fixing a doorknob in City Hall, right? So that's still resource drained to, to pick up litter and debris. We've had to contract with an independent party to remove litter and debris from encampments that are either unsafe or inaccessible or impractical to send city staff to. And we're collaborating with faith leaders and advocates on running a warming shelter. I had the opportunity to attend the dinner with the volunteers who did some great work. The city was but a small part of, of the work that they did, but we were happy to contribute with, with TESS's time and with some resources that was in the budget. So those are the things that we've, we've tried to do. This is, you know, going to an ordinance was not our first, second, or third response. This is a, you know, this is a, we've tried many things to, to address and respond to what we've seen in the data. So we are, again, finding the, our goal is the balance. You're going to see that word a lot. And I, you know, we had a public safety forum in December, I believe it was, where we heard from a lot of people, and it was, I think it was important to validate both, you know, empathy for the people who are going through difficult moments and are living in the street, may have substance abuse disorder, mental health challenges. And it's also fair to feel empathy for the people who feel unsafe in their interactions with those people, right? And I think we heard from some people who have been, you know, cornered in their, you know, in a hair salon. Somebody mentioned that they were cornered in a hair salon, asked for money when they were by themselves, and they felt vulnerable, and that's, that's a very valid feeling as well, that should not be minimized. And so, as with many other difficult issues, we, it's balanced, especially in public safety, it's balanced, it's a balance between safety and freedom of speech. And this is not the first time that any government is confronting this. I'm sure everyone in the room probably remembers the debates around the Patriot Act. Everyone in the room who's flown on an airplane has given up some of their liberties to, you know, when you're asked to take off your shoes, or now you go through facial scans. And we all do that, and we all accept it, because otherwise you don't get on the plane, and because we all value landing when we get on a plane. So that's, this is on a little bit different scale, but this is not the first time that, you know, a government has had to balance the safety of, of a collective versus the, you know, the freedoms of others. So our proposed ordinance and policy, as I mentioned, the draft was in the packet. We've, the language, as you can see, has been trimmed down quite a bit, and we've, we've restructured it after working with the chief and the, the city attorney. It's now an ordinance and a policy that travel together. And the purpose is to, to enable city authorized officials to issue notices against trespass and to enforce those notices against individuals whose behavior is dangerous, illegal, unreasonably disruptive, at the same time that we recognize the existing rights of individuals to engage in their constitutionally protected activities on public or city-owned land. So this is something, the authority to do this is not new. This exists in, not only in state law, but also in the city's code of ordinances. And, and so what we've done is the ordinance is quite minimal, and in its language, as you can see, it establishes who in the city is authorized to issue those notices and for what reasons, and, and required, and established procedure, and it requires the council to adopt a policy for us to do so. We also added public irration and defecation because that, as we discussed at the first reading, is not actually against ordinance, and we think it should be. Just a little bit more, so the notice against trespass could be issued for violation of any city ordinance, any state statute, any rule or regulation, or a legal directive issued by an authorized official. And just I have in the box there, an authorized official is any city official who is in charge at the time of issuance of the city property for which the notice is issued, any sworn officer of the police department, or any other city official authorized to enforce the city's ordinances as part of their, their duty. So for example, So for example, this could be, you know, if there's a, if there's a situation at the BOR and somebody's being unreasonably disruptive, it is possible that the person in charge of the BOR or the director of facilities could issue a notice of trespass. Practically speaking, what's going to likely happen is the police department will handle those. Our staff are generally trained to, you know, if there's a disruption, not to get involved, to call the police department, right? So that's what the ordinance says. And, but in practicality, that's what we think would happen in most cases of implementation. There are no new fines associated with this ordinance. So, you know, we heard people that, you know, that, and they were right, that there's, you know, the people who are, who may be the subject of some of these fines may not have the ability to pay. I would, you know, I would respond by saying that, you know, the ordinance was never directed only at people who don't have the ability to pay. The ordinance is applied to everybody, including myself and everybody in this room. But as I also mentioned, we never expected, this wasn't an endeavor to make money, right? So we got rid of all the fines, the new fines that were associated with this. The accountability piece is the notice of trespass. Now, there are other fines that may be issued under ordinance, and those, those exist, right? So if you can, you know, the police department can issue a fine for a violation today, they could continue to do so under this ordinance. That wouldn't be, under, under current ordinance. That's not something new granted under this proposal. We, the trespass notices would be, could be issued for a range of days based on the seriousness of the offenses, the frequency and so forth. So a minor first-time offense would result in a one-day no trespass notice. Moderate violations or second offenses would be up to 30 days. Serious offenses or, serious violations or third offenses could be up to 100 days notices. The policy requires a verbal warning to be given before a notice is issued, and there's also an appeal process through my office. So we derive this from, you know, we're trying to take best practices from, from other communities. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel here. You know, the initial ideas and a large, you know, the structure came initially from something Brattleboro tried, and we've also shifted to a policy that Burlington, we understand, worked on with the Vermont ACLU, on the no trespass piece specifically. And then just, you know, a comment that I made. I know this, this debate got divisive. So, you know, I wrote front porch forum post and something for the Times Argus, and just, I think it's worth repeating. It's my perspective anyway, and I think it's something that we've used to guide our, our approach on this, is that this ordinance is not about punishing people. It's about preserving livability and protecting everyone, including vulnerable residents and families who simply want to enjoy public spaces without fear or disruption. You know, if you want to be part of the solution, your voice is welcome. But contributing meaningfully to this conversation requires recognizing two things, that we do in fact have a problem, and that finding a path forward means balancing compassion with responsibility. So we're open to all ideas. We've tried to be, incorporate those ideas. But I think, at least from myself and the chief's perspective, coming back to that word of balance. And if, if you don't think that some of the behaviors that we're observing are in our police data are a problem, I don't know if we can find middle ground with you. If you think that, you know, if you think that that's the case, then there may not be any ordinance that's acceptable. What we're trying to do, as I said at the very beginning, is, is make sure that we're taking into account the needs of the people who may be committing these infractions and, and the needs of everyone else to safely enjoy our public spaces. And we think, after working with the police chief and the city attorney, that we're in a pretty good spot with, with the draft. So welcome comments, and otherwise, we'd like to take it to a second reading at the next meeting.
Thank you. A motion to approve and move to a second reading would be in order, and then we'll have discussion and comments.
The most.
Second, sure, a second? It's moved and seconded. Any questions or comments, Council? Yes?
So I have several questions. I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have the slideshow. So I'm just going to read from the ordinance that was in the packet. My first question is regarding section 25-2, purpose. It talks about that a trespass and enforce that notice against an individual whose behavior is dangerous, illegal, and unreasonably disruptive. And what I'm wondering is, what is the threshold for dangerous behavior? And who decides what is unreasonably disruptive? And my third question for that section is, if something's already illegal, wouldn't they just be able to be cited, and why would we need an ordinance for it?
So, Chief, I'm having deja vu. So if you want to come up and address that, I think you addressed that at a previous first reading, but thank you.
Sorry, Counselor, your first question was about--
It says, whose, nope, whose behavior is dangerous? What's the threshold for dangerous? And I guess who decides who's, who's dangerous?
Well, if you're in the park and you're engaged in something like the definition of disorderly conduct, which is violent and tumultuous behavior, that would fall into that category. This, this policy or the ordinance allows that civil aspect aside from the criminal aspect. You're absolutely right that if somebody's committing a crime, they will probably be cited into court for that.
Right.
But this allows us to have those instances where we can actually trespass them from that. So to answer your question about the, the illegal, the violent behavior, that threshold would be determined probably by a police officer.
So, and then unreasonably disruptive, I am assuming is a similar answer, that that's just determined by the police officer?
Correct.
So really--
If it's, if it's offensive behavior to the general public, and it's, you're having an outburst in the park, you're fighting, you're yelling, you're swearing, that would be disruptive behavior for anyone else that would want to be enjoying the park.
Okay. My other question was about city officials authorized to issue notice against trespass, and the city manager answered that. I'm wondering, under 25-4, it says, if you fail to follow the lawful directive, what's a lawful directive?
If I tell you as a lawful directive that you are hereby trespassed and you need to leave, and you don't, that's not following a lawful directive.
Okay. So after an officer has determined that you are unreasonably disruptive or behaving dangerously, then they can tell you, you got to go? And if you choose not to go because you think maybe you weren't disruptive or dangerous, then you, do you, then you get a notice of trespass? Is that basically a warning, or is that--
That, that would, that would be a verbal warning. For, for instance, officers have discretion. I've done many foot patrols in City Hall Park. I've not issued a single ticket. When I see people smoking, I say, hey, you see the signs? You can't smoke here. They usually obey and put it out.
Yeah.
If they don't, they're not following a lawful directive.
Okay. So I appreciate that there's been a lot of changes to the ordinance. I still am not a fan of the ordinance, but I will say that I appreciate that it has been changed. I'm concerned about this idea of criminal activity, and the manager used the word criminal, alleged criminal activity. But I think criminal activity, to your point, is if they're already doing something that's illegal, then wouldn't we already be citing them, and we wouldn't need an ordinance for it?
Correct.
Okay.
But we can also trespass them from City Hall Park under this ordinance and policy.
Okay. My question for you about that is, if you, if someone is misbehaving in City Hall Park and you trespass them, is that for the entire city, or is it for just City Hall Park?
Just City Hall Park.
Okay, so it can be a very specific location?
Correct. And that, that is part of what we worked with, what they found out in Burlington with the ACLU, working with them. You can't have a broad, we can't just say you're, you're banned from Berry City.
Right.
It has to be a distinct area.
Okay.
For instance, in Burlington, they, they tried, they used what was called fire districts. They had sections of their city that were identified as fire districts. They tried doing that from trespassing from a fire district, and it was too broad. As we found here, we were trying, I think we called it the downtown--
The downtown district, yeah, the historic downtown.
Which it wouldn't hold muster. So define that area as City Hall Park.
Okay.
Those, those sorts of things.
Okay. And then I have questions about the policy as well, but should I hold those?
We can take those. They're, it's up to the mayor, I suppose. We can take--
Sure.
Are we going to do a separate motion? Should I, I mean, I can do them all at once, or? My questions about the, the procedure for notice against trespass on city property. Under number three, it says verbal warning, and it says, a verbal warning need not be issued if the reason for the notice against trespass is an accusation of serious harmful conduct, such as arson, assault, harassment, or a threat of such conduct. Can you explain what that means?
For instance, what we had talked about when you had said, if it's already criminal and you could be cited, if you're down there committing assault and you get cited, you can also be trespassed. You don't need the verbal warning.
But my, I guess my question is, what is it about the accusation, an accusation of serious harmful conduct? Is it an accusation by the authorized official? Is it an accusation by someone who's feeling unsafe? Is it, who, where's the accusation for it coming from?
If somebody, for instance, if we get a call from a citizen that has been assaulted in the park--
Yeah.
Their, their accusation would be the accusation.
Okay.
If an officer witnesses something like that, it would be the officer's accusation.
Right, okay. So it could, it could turn out to be like this, you know, one person's story versus another person's story?
It's, again, officers have discretion, and we investigate things. It's, it's not going to be, oh, well, you said you felt intimidated, so there's your accusation. It's, it's not, it's not that standard.
Okay, okay. I have a question about under four, service of notice content. It talks about you could file an appeal with the city manager or the city manager's designee. And I'm wondering what that, who that designee might be, and what kind of training they will have to be able to determine how to process an appeal?
That, I can take that question, Counselor. That would, in probably 100% of the time, nearly 100% of the time, be the assistant city manager, who would be my designee. Traditionally speaking, if I'm out of the city, she's, has to be here. So that would be her. And, yeah, we would, we would likely work with the city attorney to get guidance and procedure on how to address these, these situations as they come to us.
Okay. I'm going, moving down to the appeal process. It talks about the written appeal shall include the appellant's name, address, and phone number. What if they don't have an address or phone number?
Then it wouldn't be included. It's, I think, same thing if there's a police report that requires it. It would be blank.
Okay. So, and the next part is that the person, how, how are they going to know about the appeal process? You're gonna, they're, they have to provide, be, they must be provided at least three business days under procedure, three business days, written notice of the date, time, and location of the hearing. If they've been handed a trespass order, and maybe they're not showing up in Berry City anymore, how are you, and they don't have an address, how do you tell them they need to show up to--
Everything that you see here, we're going to have special trespass notices, not just the standard one that you, you usually do for a business. We have to create new forms with all this information on it.
Okay.
So they're going to have all that direction on that form.
And the appeal process will be on there as well?
Correct.
Okay, great. And then I guess my last question is, the last part under enforcement, it talks about, it says, once a notice against trespass has been issued, unless the notice has been stayed by receipt of an appeal, or the notice has been overturned by a decision on appeal, a violation of the notice may be enforced pursuant to 13 VSA 3705, a criminal violation, or section 1118 of the city's code of ordinance, a civil violation. So is that saying that it can be basically bumped up to a criminal violation?
Correct. If you get issued a notice of trespass and you do not abide by that, you can be invited into court with a citation for criminal trespass.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions. I guess my concern is that, I'm worried that it's a slippery slope, and I'm worried about all the same things that I was worried about before. I'm also, would encourage some kind of restorative justice because I wonder if just, you know, saying to someone, you can't be in City Hall Park for, let's see, one day, 30 days, 180 days, two years. I'm not sure that's necessarily going to be a game changer. But I wonder if restorative justice would be a helpful process to have someone go through, especially if there's another party involved who, you know, was standing at the ATM and getting money out, and then was being, you know, badgered, let's say. Then, you know, being able to have a conversation with those two parties so that that person can understand why the other person felt really unsafe during the situation, I think would be helpful for people to, to know that. But that's something that I would encourage, and I, I think it's better, but I still am not in love with it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
I wonder if, Chief, under Class C violations, the first one is using city resources in a manner inconsistent with their intended use. I honestly don't know what that means. Could you please give some examples or some specificity to that?
Did, did you have anything in mind on that?
Or manager, either of you?
For, for one of, one of the things in, in my definition of that would be, again, if you're in the park, the park is used for recreating. If you're vandalizing the gazebo, yes, it is a criminal violation, but that's not a manner consistent with the use of that gazebo.
Yeah.
Those, those sorts of resources that are provided to residents to use. If you're up at the BOR and you're causing damage, those sorts of things, that's not a manner that's consistent with what it's meant to do.
Somebody, somebody running circle, driving circles around the dirt parking lot of the BOR. It's not a racetrack. It's a, you know, that's, it's not the intended use of a parking lot up there.
I guess it's, I understand the vandalism concern, because gazebo's, their intended use is not to be vandalized. That makes total sense to me. I, I guess it still feels, that feels, let's, let's talk about vandalism if we want to talk about vandalism, using city resources in a manner that feels pretty wide open to me.
It's, it's not going to be utilized, open to interpretation, to target any certain individual or class of individuals. It's, it's in response to being able to combat what we're dealing with in these areas, such as the park and those, BOR and those types of areas.
Is there anywhere where it is currently posted or understood what the intended use of city facility? I mean, I know the BOR, and I get, like, it's a hockey rink, but City Hall Park, like, what's the, or are we relying on sort of--
Not a specific posting that says this park is used for recreating, if that's what you're asking. It's, it's not specifically posted what the actual use of a park is.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not, people use parks for all sorts of reasons, right? And I don't want us to get into a situation where we think it's intended for the use of one thing, and someone else, I don't know. Like, there's lots of ways that people use parks that I would choose not to use a park, but it's not necessarily a dangerous or worrisome use of it. So I would just want to make sure that we're not going in that direction, and that just feels, is a little too open to me, that's all.
Understood. Counselor Dearing?
I had a question about how long does a violation last? So say, for example, somebody, you know, has a Class B violation, and then two years later, they get another Class B violation. And then maybe two years later, they get another Class B violation. And so is there a timeframe in which things drop off so they don't accumulate?
Yes, for, for the most part, like with the trespass notices, the court has deemed that you have to issue a trespass notice after a year. It's, it's null and void. So you're going to, you're going to see that, obviously, if you have people that, you know, each week we're dealing with, and they're, obviously, those wouldn't drop off. But in your scenario where you said, you know, in 2024, somebody has a violation, and then again in 2025, it wouldn't be held against them. It would be a separate--
Okay.
Counselor, oh, sorry.
Looking through this, and when we looked at it the first time, seven pages, a lot of stuff, a lot, a lot of stuff that any of us were not so confident about. But I really appreciate the streamlined process in which both the ordinance has been drafted, as well as the procedure itself. That, working in a school environment, we give people expectations of, well, what we expect from their behavior for the students. This is, to me, no different than us telling our community, this is, this is what we expect you to do when you're in a public place in Berry City. It's really just, to me, a statement and really giving some, essentially a timeout, that if you can't meet the expectations as an adult in our community, then we're going to-- then we're going to give you a timeout, we're going to give you a tab. A take a break is what we call that in school. So we're going to give you a break for a day, a month, maybe 180 days at most. But if you can fix your behavior, then it goes away. So to me, I really appreciate this policy and what you all are working toward to get this accomplished with. Thank you.
Counselor Hillgarner?
I still have a question. I, when I was reading the Section 7 enforcement, it said that the violation of the notice may be enforced pursuant to the, for the criminal VSA 3705 and, or Section 1118 of the city's code of ordinance. And I was a little confused because that's just, I mean, I read, I went and looked it up and that was just, you know, the same thing that you would do and what, I thought the enforcement part was sort of to address what happens if the person didn't follow the trespass, they violated the trespass. And so I was wondering whether that was a mistake and it should say 1120, the section that talks about the fines that are already in place in our ordinances. And if that's, if that's the intent, you know, if that's the sort of stepped up civil thing, I'd, I'd like to know that. And I think maybe we need to say 1120 instead of 11-18.
I have it. No, the reference is to a section of ordinance that talks about our ability to issue notices of trespasses generally. So it's, it's, that's, that's the correct reference that we worked, it is, yes.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't sound like enforcement. I mean, okay, if it's correct, then it's correct. I just.
Yeah, well, we can ask the manager to double check that. That would not be considered a substantive change if a reference to a different section of the ordinances is incorrect. So we'll ask him to, assuming this went to a second reading, we'll simply ask them to double check that.
Then there's one other thing I'd like to just raise as a possibility. And that would be, we might also include something about a restorative justice process being one of the options for enforcement in that 1118 that would be specific to this ordinance.
That's always open, that's always open in any instance.
Restorative justice is always a process. For instance, when we send information to the state's attorney's office, you always have a restorative justice option, diversion option, as long as it fits the parameters. So restorative justice has always been an option.
Okay. Thank you.
If I can add one more thing to that. Both, both parties in restorative justice, if it's, if it's a mediation portion of it, both parties have to be willing to go.
Indeed, indeed. So then if we wanted something that was, that could be mandated by the city, you know, as part of a noncriminal enforcement structure, we might do something like include community, a community service requirement that's separate from the restorative justice.
It would get sent to the criminal justice center or the Community Justice Center for restorative justice. They usually draw up some sort of, I don't want to call it a, I'll call it a plan, if you will, that could include community service. Those types of things come out of that.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy?
Hi, thank you. Just a few questions here. Legal counsel was consulted in rewriting this ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Who paid for that and how much did it cost?
The city paid for it.
Okay, the city paid for it this, this time around?
Yes.
Okay, and it was the mayor who paid for the previous review?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Did legal counsel indicate that there were any problems with the ordinance as previously written?
That's, they, no, they didn't. They, we worked through the issues that we heard back on feedback and we were responsive to the feedback we got. This ordinance did pass another municipality also with legal counsel. So that's, yeah, that's.
I was just curious, just curious, thank you. Section 25-4 states that if an individual violates any city ordinance, rule or regulation, including any code of conduct or state law, or while on or within a city-owned property fails to follow the rules, sorry, the lawful directive of an authorized official, an authorized official may issue a notice of trespass for a violation which is committed on or within city property, including but not limited to municipal buildings, parks, et cetera. Are violations like speeding, failing to stop at a stop sign, or running a red light a violation of state law or city ordinances?
They are.
Right, so that would allow someone to be trespassed for speeding or running a red light, correct?
That's not what this is about and no, they would not be trespassed.
But the text of the law would allow that, correct?
The letter of the law and the spirit of law. And again, officers get to use discretion. And that's not what, that's not what this is about. This is about the behaviors in City Hall Park and other areas of the city that are disruptive.
Sure, but I believe most people would agree that the best intention would be to have the letter of the law align with the spirit of the law. And in this case, that would seem to be a circumstance in which that would not be the case. Would this also be a violation of the intended use of streets as well? Just to clarify that point.
I think the chief said that, that doesn't apply to this.
Well, according to his personal interpretation at this moment, correct, right? But the, the letter of the law would make that the case. Correct?
My response hasn't changed.
Okay. What is the process for adopting or amending codes of conduct?
You mean ordinances?
No, codes of conduct. It mentions in Section 25-4 that if you violate any code of conduct, that you could be subject to trespass.
It depends if it's, if we have one for a city facility, possibly. That would be the only exception or the only situation I would.
If there's a drawn up code of conduct.
Yeah, that would be adopted by the city.
So adopted by the city by a vote of the majority of council? There's no other process to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. I don't see any requirement in the ordinance as written that a notice of trespass designate an area of effect, right? It doesn't say anywhere that it needs to specify City Hall Park, X Street, wherever. Is that folded in somewhere else already?
Nope.
Okay, so I would suggest that prior to passage, if this does pass, that that would be necessary to include in order to match the intent of the law.
We disagree with that. The intent of this is to allow officers have discretion when they enforce our this ordinance. And so, for example, if somebody were to go flash a kid at a playground, they might be trespassed from every playground in every park. If somebody were to have an open container at City Hall Park, they might only be trespassed from City Hall Park.
Should, that could be specified in the issuance of the, of the.
It could be specified in the issuance of the trespass. It doesn't have to be in the, in the policy itself.
It would seem to me that it should, should be required to be specified in order to be thorough and legal.
The notice of trespass would require it, yes, correct.
Oh, it would.
Policy would not.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question. Do we have to let someone know that they're trespassed from a specific geographic area in a notice of trespass? Was that your question?
Essentially. What I don't, what I don't see.
How would you ever enforce it if you didn't tell them where they couldn't go?
Well, you, I mean, if you, if you, if you just say the whole city, right?
Can't say the whole city. And we won't say the whole city.
It's, that's, okay, so that's, that's, that's already covered by existing law, it sounds like. I just wanted to clarify that, so thank you. Under appeals, it mentions a seven-day appeal process to the city manager or designee. Have any standards for adjudicating these appeals been adopted? And what standard of proof would be required to go forward with the trespass?
We will adopt them if this ordinance and policy are approved.
So there is none, but the plan would be to adopt those policies in the future?
Yes.
Rather than spelling them out in the ordinance?
Correct.
How would the appeals process work if someone were to be issued a notice of trespass of under a week? Say, one day notice of trespass? I would assume that, that would come into effect immediately. So how would the appeals process work for something that cannot be appealed in, under, in, within a reasonable timeframe?
Right, you know, for similar situations.
You would have, where it talks about a stay, a stay in there, that would come into play during that.
So they would, so if you say somebody has to, can't return to City Hall Park in a day, they would have to file a stay immediately within an hour or whatever?
We would, if they want to appeal it, there would be a stay of that.
Okay, so it would be stayed.
And that's why, that's why only those one-day things apply to the lesser violations.
Okay, thank you. I want to also.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it. I've been pretty generous with the time. Could you wrap it up?
Right, because you said you would be in the past. I'd like to reiterate Counselor Guston's concerns around the manner inconsistent with their intended use. I thought that was well, well put. Can somebody describe the intended use of a sidewalk?
Not gonna, I think, I think we all know, Jeremy.
Sounds like, so we, so, right, this would be the standard, it'd be a smell test, it sounds like. We all, we all know what it's for and then, right, it's all to, to sort of personal decisions to decide whether something is or is not intended use based on the personal discretion of whoever's doing that. I would also, in wrapping up, like to add that the principle of treating Berry City's residents like they're children in a school strikes me as incredibly paternalistic and overbearing, right? We should have clear rules that adults are expected to follow and can follow and read and know what behaviors fall into accepted and unaccepted rules. And I think that this leaves way too much open to that. And as a policy approach, is far too paternalistic and far too open-ended. Thank you.
Joellen?
I think, I think actually that Ellen was before me.
Yeah.
Who was? Yeah, I don't, sure. Ellen?
Yeah, I have, I have a lot of comments here to make. One is that I want to thank my fellow Berry residents who so diligently have paid attention to this in the first hearing, made our voices heard and see the changes as a result of that. It would be great if that could be recognized by the council, but I don't think it will be. So I am doing it now because I'm very proud that there are people in Berry who care enough to think about people's rights and, and have gotten, have done some serious looking at this. So thank you all. I appreciate this. I'm sorry that the mayor feels that this is deja vu, but it is a deja vu. It is a deja vu. This keeps getting trotted out, so you're going to hear the same concerns because some of them are not being heard. In paragraph three, I am thinking that the language needs a tweak at least because you've got, it ends with a threat of such conduct. One of the conducts that is alluded to here is harassment. I don't know what a threat of harassment is. So that's just a word problem, maybe. But, but I also think it could be abused because that word threat is, it's, you know, what's a threat of harassment? I echo, I'm not going to repeat the things that other people have said so well, but I agree with them, especially about the address and those kinds of things. I think lewd behavior, I don't know if there is one legal definition of lewd behavior, but that's pretty broad. That's in bullet point three under E. Same with obscene language, same with unreasonable noise. I've been at City Hall Park many times with, you know, exercising First Amendment rights, holding signs, things like that, and had incredible harassment from people in pickup trucks, people with really loud cars revving on purpose, like really, you know, nuisance horns to harass. So that's unreasonable noise also. So I just wanted to point to that. Now, down in the appeal process, I will echo others. This is an incredible opportunity for a restorative process. As far as I understand restorative process, it does not come into play unless people are actually charged with a violation. This is being handed a trespass. But that sounds like a really great early intervention to understand, for that person to understand how their behavior has affected something else, what its effect is, and to hear any harm done, to maybe really change this behavior instead of continuing to push people out and out and out. So I think this is a remarkable opportunity for that kind of thing. Now I want to talk about the decision maker. What I'm concerned about in general here is that this is almost an extralegal route. When you're handed a trespass and you appeal to the city manager or the city manager's designee, this is, where are your rights? Where, where is your legal representate, your right to legal representation and due process? You go into a room, which I believe, I don't see that there's transparency in this process. I don't see that's a public hearing. I see it's, you go and, you go and talk to the city, to the city manager or, or designee. And this is a person who may not have a whole lot of power. I assume they won't have a whole lot of power, political power, legal power, money, comfort, transportation, those kinds of things. So they're, they're in a pretty one-down position already. And then they're meeting with the city counselor alone with no one there. It feels like a shortcut to a legal process to me. And I'm quite concerned about that. And, and think that that probably doesn't, doesn't end shouldn't stand. And I think, one more thing. Yeah, I think that that was all, I wanted those things to be addressed.
Thank you.
And I'd like to hear them addressed, actually. Will there be any transparency in that process?
The hearing process? I mean, the process is spelled out, so I don't think there'd be any change unless it's amended by the city council.
Not open to the public, not open to having a representative with the person, is that right?
Sue Higbee?
Whoa. Maybe Sue can let me finish if you can.
Okay.
Mute her.
I was actually going to pick up on something that you mentioned, Ellen. This, this issue about, about the appeal. Do you want to continue talking? Ellen?
Excuse me, Ms. Higbee?
Oh.
I believe this is, I believe I share this with her.
All right, I'm so sorry.
She's good.
Okay. Sorry, Ellen, but I'm going to talk a little bit about the appeal process. I actually, I read this a couple of times. And this is no reflection at all on any single person who would be involved in making those decisions at appeal. But I would say that the session should be recorded or it should be open to public. This is really, it's not just unfair for the individual who's asking for an appeal, but it's also potentially unsafe for a single individual to be the decision maker behind the desk. I really do think that there needs to be some sort of measure of public scrutiny and having it recorded would be good. I can speak, sadly enough, about a personal experience where I had an appeal with the tax assessor here in Berry. And it became a very unpleasant situation. I wish that I had taken my tape recorder to the session. I noticed that he had one, but he turned his off before he started cursing at me. So I, I can say that my experience with an appeal here in the city was incredibly unprofessional and disrespectful. So when I think about somebody who might not have strong verbal skills or the ability to advocate for themselves in any way, somebody who might be nervous anyway, kind of down and out, putting that person with just one other individual doesn't seem right. I do think that generally speaking, if there's an appeal, the appeal process should be structured so that there are more than one person in place making the decision, perhaps a panel of three, for example. But it should be a public, open, public. But it should be a public, open public session, and it should be recorded. Now, I do have a question. There were some charts presented earlier, data shared that indicated that there was a higher incidence of different types of petty crime, maybe interpersonal connections that weren't very pleasant, different categories. Now, what portion of those incidents, the increased incidents, happen on public property versus private property? Is, is that clear to us? We're only talking about an ordinance for public property, and I have no indication at all, are we just squeezing a balloon where we tell somebody, you are no longer welcome to be in City Hall Park because you are not doing City Hall Park activities in an appropriate manner? So we're squeezing the balloon and they just cross the street and do similar activities on somebody's private property? So I'd like to have a sense of the data shared, does, what portion is on public property?
To be clear, the, when I run the stats, I run them by title of issue or offense, if you will. So I did not break it down to this is in City Hall Park, this is private, this is that. We just ran the stats on these are the disturbances, these are this, these are that.
And that is precisely what I thought. I thought that the data might have some problems and I, because I've been working in downtown Berry for 24 years, and I have a good sense of what goes on in different nooks and crannies, public property, private property. I run a private property, and I have a good sense of what goes on in my alleyways, behind the building, and on other people's private property. And so what might be happening here inadvertently is the city might be structuring something that actually creates a few more pesky problems in other areas. And so please give some consideration to the judgments that you're making today with respect to other property owners here in the city.
Thank you. I think Ms. Mulvaney had her hand up for a serve, then I'll get to the audience. Jo Ellen?
Yeah. One of the things that could have been very helpful with this and might still be if you can manage it is to write up a list of definitions. Most of the things that we see that are either legal documents or some kind of ordinance have that component. So we need some definitions here about the specific words. I think that would be really helpful. I have just basically some questions. Can you tell me what studies you looked at to determine if this proposal would result in the outcomes you desire? What studies did you, did you look at?
We talked to, we talked to the Burlington Police Department, so.
I'm asking about studies, actual academic studies.
We didn't look at studies. We looked at the Burlington Police Department's experiences with the policy that they've had some luck with, and that's what we are using as a, as a, as a template for what we are proposing to the council tonight.
I didn't ask about a template. I asked about actual studies, what you have done, that's okay. So what day, did you only analyze the data from the city or did you look at some data that was statewide, some of the, some comparative things?
What kind of data are you asking about?
Let me go on to the next one, not important. Just tell me this, how, how would this proposal advance the city's strategic plan? What component of the strategic plan is this addressing?
This is addressing a vibrant downtown.
Vibrant downtown, very. And tell me what committees or stakeholders were contacted to assist in this proposal?
We've had a public forum in December where the whole, members of the whole city were invited. We had a council meeting, we had a council meeting in January where this was discussed. We had a council meeting last month or earlier this month where this, another, this was discussed again, and we're meeting tonight.
Yeah, this is discussing the public. I'm asking specifically about stakeholders like the various social services that affect us. Did you talk to the people who are in the community justice?
We talk to those organizations all the time, and many of them tell us that they're overwhelmed by the issues they're dealing with.
Policy, just for the specific one, not all the time. You did not, that's okay. How did you meaning, how, how did you meaningfully consult with community members when developing this proposal? I was at that meeting. That was not very meaningful. It was a lot of anecdotal stuff. Most of the people there were not even Berry City residents. So how did you meaningfully consult with community members besides just these hearings?
We held multiple forums and council meetings, and we talked to stakeholders all the time about the issues they're facing with these quality of life complaints.
So this question is actually to the heart of the matter, and that is, is there going to be a disparate impact for any marginalized group?
Only people committing crimes.
And what are the steps you are taking to mitigate the disparate impacts?
We're, I mean, the disparate impact is if they're committing a crime, they may be trespassed from a city property. So the disparate impact is, is we are, we are directing patrols, working with faith providers to provide services and meals. We are cleaning up litter after people who leave litter throughout our parks and playgrounds and by the pool. So yes, there may be people who are impacted by this negatively, who are committing these nuisance of crimes issues. There's gonna be disparate positive impact on people who can recreate in our public spaces without fear of these issues or disturbance from these issues.
Now, let me just tell you this. All of the questions that I asked you are part of the Berry City Assessment Tool. And had you used this in the beginning and asked us to help you devise it, it would have been much more informative for your process. And you wouldn't be dealing with this kind of, let's say, animosity toward it perhaps, because it would have been a much more open process. This was not an open process, and I'm sorry that it wasn't, because it could have been very helpful.
I think it's ironic that I'm being told it's not a public process at a public council meeting that's being recorded for the fourth or fifth time, but thank you.
Meetings are not the only public process.
Mr. Heath? How are you? And Mr. McSheffrey, I'll be with you in just a minute. Go ahead. Nope, Mr. Heath, you're good.
I'm gonna come at this at a little different angle here than what I've been hearing. But I, when I knew I was coming tonight, I wrote, sat down and wrote some little stuff here that I'd like to share with you. I'm gonna start out by saying that I agree with, with this Chapter 25, conduct in parks and public spaces. I think that you should definitely pass that, just so you know how I'm feeling, start with, okay? It's acceptable for anyone to exercise their rights as long as they're not infringing on someone else's rights. This is exactly what's happening in downtown Berry. Some folks are showing disregard for other people's rights to the point that some normal law-abiding citizens are not feeling safe going downtown Berry and surrounding areas. Now, this is a different angle, you see, and that is, I'm hearing from a lot of folks that because of, you had mentioned earlier, some person got cornered in their hairdressing studio or so, or something, and was asked for money, was uncomfortable. And then we had a pan, we had a panhandler down there that was aggressively asking people for money, not really wanted, not even want to take no for an answer. And some old man got knocked down back here behind the granite bank here somewhere, and his wallet was taken away from him. And so this is when, this is when you have the bad behavior by the minority controlling the majority's way of life. That's what's happened. This is why we need rules to keep this displaying of bad behavior in check, so law-abiding taxpayers can go downtown without being harassed or witnessing undesirable acts. And I went on to say, in public areas like defecation, urination, the sale and use of drugs, panhandling taken place, just to mention a few. This all adds up to the degradation of the peaceful and desirable way of life that majority of people want and desire and deserve here in the city of Berry. Over time, if this behavior is not, goes unchecked, it will escalate to the point that the downtown merchants and landlords, of course, let's not forget landlords, landlords and everyone will be affected in negative way. No, no one will want to go downtown or come to Berry to live. In my mind, it is, it is paramount that this set of rules, ordinances be passed and enforced immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. Mr. McSheffrey?
Good evening. Can you hear me? I'm sorry, I'm on my computer and I haven't done this since, since COVID.
Yep, you're good.
First of all, what that young fellow just said is, sums it up really, you know? He's been around for a few days and, and understands the logistics and the makeup of the city, as do you, as do I, and as do a lot of us. Listening to some of the, the pushback on why we would not do this makes literally no, no sense to me. It's, it's, it's unfathomable for me to understand, especially when we get people that are sitting behind not only a keyboard, but a keyboard, talking about things when they have lived here a couple of years, have no children in, in the school system, have no wife that works in the school system, have donated no time, effort, money, or otherwise to this community. It's, it's tiring. Again, it's my, this is our front yard. This is a place that, that we want just to be safe. We understand, we understand what these people are going through. Five out of the seven people that are probably in the Berry City Park most of the time have either worked for me, I've played softball with, they've been to my weddings and made bad choices, went down the wrong path, and are unwilling to even take help. I don't think they're criminally dangerous all, all of the time, but when, once you get to a certain situation or a certain part of your life, you'll do anything to get your next fix. This is a drug problem. It's a drug problem that needs to be, needs to be sought after at the roots of it, and that's understanding. But it's unacceptable behavior that's happening daily in broad, broad daylight from the time we wake up to the time we go to bed, and it's not fair. And it's not fair to downtown businesses. It's not fair to the people that are trying to come support us in a time where it's very easy not to support us. It's easier to eat at home, it's easier and cheaper to, to shop on Amazon and not go downtown. We, as downtown business owners, and I think I speak on behalf of all of us because I have a mutual respect because of kindness and because of thoughtfulness and because of floods and COVID and going through things with people that don't see politically exactly how I see, we respect one another and we work for one another, and we're trying to do the same thing, and that is to make downtown Berry prosperous, special, kind, safe, and, and, and be able to have a place where we can raise our children. Like I have a 25-year-old son, and I thought my, I thought my ship sailed. That's the only reason I'm not showing my face on video, because I just look old tonight. But I, I genuinely believe in this city. I genuinely believe in, in the people in it, even though I don't agree with them. There's three people, four people on, that are sitting there tonight that, that I don't believe with, or agree with, but it doesn't mean I don't believe in them. I guess my ask is, instead of us asking questions constantly on these, the same questions, I've chimed in or been in person for every one of these hearings, and it is the same questions. I think Nicholas did a wonderful job of explaining it. As a matter of fact, I had my computer on, I didn't even know it was him. I was trying to like, who's saying this, because it sounds exactly what I'm, I'm trying to say. And that's not a, that's not a political thing. That's you hired this human and extended his contract to be, to be the guy that helps make these decisions to better Berry. And I think that we need to continue down the path of bettering Berry. Stop getting involved in local nitpicking stuff just to hear ourselves speak and understand that the good people of the city, including the ones that aren't agreeing with this, want it to be better. They just want it to be better. So why is something that's so simplistic as this such a big deal? These guys aren't gonna get in trouble. They're not gonna get arrested and thrown in jail, and if they did, it's probably good for them for a couple of days, they'll get a shower. Like, it's, it's, it's such a simple step to start the process of trying to better our city, of trying to make people in, in this city understand that this city council that was elected by the people of this city understand and appreciate what we're trying to accomplish. And it's nothing more. This is not political. This is, we want a safe and respectful place to raise our kids, to go out to dinner and not be harassed and not be, not be in trouble for doing so. It is 1 million percent affecting downtown Berry now, and it's grown over the last year, and it continues to grow. I, I, I'm a numbers guy, and it, and it has, it is not cool. And it's not because of the, my numbers, because I'm on my way out of this, this, this thing, but eventually, but I have, I employ 50 people that rely on this city and the people of this city to continue to feel safe enough to go out and park and dine and do what they need to do and support the city. We have 20 new restaurants within a mile and a half of this place since I opened mine. It was really cool when we were the only thing in town. We need to get together, we need to be thoughtful, we need to be respectful, and we need to take care of it once, one step at a time, and this is just a step. And no one's gonna get hurt by it, nobody's gonna get affected by it, especially us. And unless you're friends with those people and know them on a first base, name basis like I do, because they went to my wedding, or I played softball with them, or they worked in my kitchen, and I employed them and mentored them and tried to help, then I, I just don't think there's another argument. I appreciate the time, I don't want to go longer. Thank you, and I appreciate all you, you guys donating your time to help the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Erica, I should have called on you before, I apologize.
No worries. I know she didn't time him out like you did Ellen, but that's neither here nor there. I just want to note that I do work, I'm from Berry City. As far as the noise, I can hear the noise from downtown at my house up on Basset. But again, that, that's coming from City Hall Park. So if you want to talk about noise, that's there. But I just want also note that there is another round of evictions from the hotels coming up July 1st. So, you know, just putting a note out there. But as far as folks, you know, causing disruptions in City Hall Park, I know if we're picking on City Hall Park, I'm just gonna pick on a little bit more. That's where folks are going because that's where the services are. That's where the churches are. That's where people's health and wellness are. That's where the library is. That's where folks are getting services. Also, I was there, I've been at all the meetings, and we didn't want this ordinance. We did not want it. We wanted other things. We wanted more lighting, we wanted more services. Believe it or not, it's getting warm out. People don't have water. What's up with that? Yes, we had a wonderful warming shelter. It was great. I volunteered at it. I volunteered at the, at the overnights. But I, you know, when it came around to June 7th, I offered folks water. They didn't have water for their animals. There were families living in their cars. I'm talking about families, mother, father, child. They didn't have water. That's a simple thing that we can offer folks. We're not looking for more ordinances, we're not looking for more police involvement. People are just looking for water. They don't have basic necessities. And the gentleman who spoke before me, who was joking about people can get showers, people don't have places to shower in Berry. Yes, we have Good Sam, yes, Heading has nicely volunteered their church for showers, but people don't have a place to shower. Isn't that disgusting? I would be, you know, that's disgusting. To me, that's gross. But these are our basic necessities. We're not looking for ordinances, we're just looking for people to have quality of life. But again, I'm not gonna use up time because you're gonna tie me out like you did for Ellen. But yeah, it's, it's sad. It's really sad the way we're treating people.
Danielle?
Hi, my name's Danielle Zarzki, I live on Curry Street, and I don't have any kids. My wife doesn't work for the school. I've lived here for only six years, and since I've lived here, I've actually dedicated significant time to volunteering and doing things for the city that the people of the city have asked for. I just want to make that point. And before I moved here, I actually lived somewhere else, and I think that makes me worthy of having a voice, and that makes everybody worthy of having a voice. And I've listened to a lot of folks that have lived here for a very long time. You know, I don't just stand up for people who've been here for a couple of years. I think that the questions that folks have asked tonight have I think that the questions that folks have asked tonight have really, are just going to make this stronger. So if the ordinance does eventually move through, I think it will be a better ordinance because of those questions. And I think that's a good thing. I think it's a good thing to have an engaged public, I think it's a good thing for people to ask questions. Like I said, there's a lot I learned that I would never even thought of, so I really appreciate that. And I would also say that I don't hang out at City Hall Park, not because of who's down there, but because it is loud, extremely loud. I, I feel bad for people who live like in the city proper and what they have to listen to. As far as noise, you know, there's a reason why Courier Park is the park that people go to for events. And it's not because there aren't folks hanging out there who, you know, maybe they're not afraid of. It's, it's because it's just quieter and safer from the perspective of traffic. I think that's important to point out. And I, I want to also just say thank you for allowing this opportunity to be able to ask questions and to provide feedback and for actually doing work on this, getting legal review. Again, I think that's really important, and it's going to make it, it will make this ordinance, if it moves through, stronger. Whether or not I agree with it, so thank you for my time.
Thank you. Counselor?
Got a question for Chief Vell, and then I have a possible amendment. My question to you, Chief Vell, is when an officer deals with somebody in any interaction, isn't that an opportunity to coach and correct people? So if an officer is responding to a situation based on this conduct in parks and public spaces, it would then give them the opportunity to talk to the individual, say, hey, this is what's going on, this is what your behavior is, why it's unacceptable, and kind of have an opportunity to kind of make some reparations, we'll say, as a community member? Would you agree with that statement?
I do agree, and that happens quite frequently.
Now, I kind of, you know, we talk about an appeals process, and I, I hear loud and clear from my colleagues and from our community that an appeals process with one individual can be really difficult. We've all been in those situations. And maybe I, you know, propose an amendment of having two counselors, you know, attend the appeal. So at that point, we have two counselors and the manager. Maybe it's when there's an appeal process or an appeal put in, the manager sends out an email to the entire council saying, hey, we have an appeal that is looking to be heard. The first two counselors that respond to that and can be available, could be something that could be convened. But that's kind of a compromise to kind of make sure there's some accountability and transparency. And it's no offense to you, Mr. Manager, but managers come and go. And this ordinance, you know, if we craft it properly, could last more than that.
You want to respond?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I'm going to try to be very delicate when I say this, and thank you all for already extending my contract.
I don't want it to get political.
That's what I was going to say.
It's about justice, it's not about politics. And do I trust everyone on this council not to make it political? Very sadly, no, I do not. So if you wanted to say the manager could designate up to three people, I'd have no issue with that. And if the manager wanted to designate a counselor, he or she could do that.
Yeah, I was, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Saving me from that.
You can count on me.
I was going to say to the appeals process, you know, I, I don't have a problem with making it public, but I think sometimes people, for the sake of, you know, wanting there to be a show and something to go see, maybe there's people who don't want the public in their hearing because they may be embarrassed or whatever by the action, right? I'm not saying they will or won't be, but that's the case, that there are people who may not want a spectacle around their appeal. So I think if the council is wanting to do something like that, I would suggest leaving it at the option of the individual. But I think blanket saying that it's open to the public might be counterproductive for somebody who doesn't want to be on Zoom and have, you know, 20 people from their living rooms, you know, coming in to talk about maybe they defecated in the park. So I just would think people should be cognizant of the fact that it's, you know, it's, if you want to focus on the person in the middle, focus on them, not on, on maybe, you know, a wish to make it open in that sense. I would leave it to the individual involved to make that decision. I have no problem with doing it, but I think we should be respectful of, of that aspect of it as well.
I think, I think I did appreciate Ms. Higbee's suggestion that it be recorded on some level.
Correct, yes.
Audio with a minimum.
Yep, I agree with that.
Yes, Counselor?
This is, I guess, a question for the manager. In, are there appeals processes in any other part of ordinance? And if so, how are those written and handled?
I can't, it looks like Representative Booton, I was going to say Animal Control Committee, but that's, that's like a
Parking tickets?
Parking tickets appeal process, yeah.
And can you, can you detail how those are, how those are handled, please?
Does those go through, the parking?
Appeal goes through a process where it gets reviewed by either the deputy chief or myself, and we make a decision as to whether we're going to void the ticket or not.
Yeah, the Animal Control Committee is an established committee, and it, it's established when, when a case needs to be heard. And what we'll usually have is the, the Animal Control Officer will make a finding, an investigation. It's a semi-judicial body, so the body can meet in deliberative session. And it's, I believe it's in either charter or ordinance that it exists, but I'll, I'd have to verify that. Ordinance, thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Booton?
I just want to say thank you for working on this ordinance. You know, because I, I think of, you know, the needles up at the waterfall, a place that, you know, the River Access folks wanted to have available for folks, and needles underneath the gazebo, not to mention somebody defecating there, people dealing with defecation on porches. The, the question that I have to the chief is, do you believe, how many years first of experience do you have as a police officer? 35 years. In your experience for 35 years, do you believe that this ordinance will help cut down on some of those, those issues? Say that a little bit louder? Yes. And I think that's an important note. 35 years of experience, he's bringing forth this, this, this ordinance and telling people on this board that this ordinance will help him to make our city a better place. And at the end of the day, every single one of you that's sitting behind that table is here for one thing, and that's a hashtag better Berry, right? And I think that this is something that should be moved forward. Want to make tweaks, absolutely, that's fine. But I'm really encouraged by what you guys are doing, and say thank you, and I hope you move it forward.
Thank you. Mr. McKenzie?
Good evening, and for the record, my name is Steve McKenzie, I'm retired Berry City manager. I wish to comment in support of the proposed public conduct ordinance. I believe adoption of a public ordinance, public conduct ordinance is a reasonable step to address disrespectful, aggressive, or destructive behavior on the part of any citizen in our community. This ordinance will provide a reasonable tool to deal with unacceptable or unruly behavior. I understand that some are concerned this ordinance, if adopted, will target and/or discriminate against our homeless or transient population. I don't share that concern. I don't expect the actions of city officials, including our police officers, will change dramatically upon passage of this ordinance. I have confidence the police will enforce this ordinance objectively and expect. This ordinance will provide a reasonable tool to deal with unacceptable or unruly behavior in our community. I do expect that officials will use discretion in the application of this ordinance. I do not expect that our homeless population will be targeted. I can't imagine being homeless, and I'm blessed that I am not. I see nothing wrong with a civil or respectful request for a handout. But an individual's behavior in asking for same that is threatening, intimidating, or otherwise aggressive is not acceptable. As tragic or distressing as being homeless is, that is not a license for disrespectful or aggressive behavior toward our residents, nor disrespect for or vandalism of public property. One observation I do make after reading the proposed ordinance is that I do not see in Section 25-2, purpose, that it explicitly addresses aggressive panhandling. I'm not sure if that is by intent or omission, but I point that out for council's consideration and the manager's consideration as a con, as an option. In closing, I reiterate my support for a public conduct ordinance, and I notice the trespass policy. In the final analysis, if the application of this ordinance proves to be problematic, it can be rescinded. But it is a reasonable step and warrants implementation, if only on a trial basis, to see if it can address the public behavior concerns expressed by many in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counselor Spaulding?
I wanted to say thank you for your recommendation for Counselor Deering about the having counselors present. I think it's a great idea, and I would support that kind of amendment. I, I disagree that it would be political. I think the way that I understood your recommendation is that counselors would be there, but the decision maker would still be the manager, and correct me if I'm wrong, which means just other people would be present, would be invited to be a witness to the appeal from the person who gets the no trespass and the decision maker. So I wonder if we could consider that kind of arrangement so that there's more transparency and there's someone else in the room to just be an observer, if you will. The other thing I would like to say is, I, I don't think that anyone sitting up here or who's arguing for or against this wants our city to be unsafe. I don't, just because I'm asking questions doesn't mean I just, you know, think it should be a free for all. I think we all want our city to be safe. I think I'm coming at it from the perspective of, when you talk about we're concerned about our vulnerable community members, you probably have in your head, you know, some cute little older lady who has her purse and is going to get her hair done. And, and I actually, when I think about our most vulnerable, I think about the people who are hanging out in the park. And I think those are our most vulnerable community members. And I'm concerned that this kind of ordinance is going to further criminalize behavior where they're just trying to exist. And so that's what my concern is. I understand we have to have rules, we have to have, you know, ways that we, what's acceptable behavior. And sometimes people obviously need reminding, kids, adults, you name it. You get stopped for speeding, you just got to be reminded. You get a parking ticket, you got to be reminded, you know, like, I get that. But I also think that I want people to understand that this isn't political for me. This is about empathy for people who are not having their basic human needs being met. And that's what concerns me. So that's why I'm advocating so strongly for, how can we make sure that this is a process that is, I think, to the point that people are making transparent, but also that will hopefully help people who are in a really vulnerable situation get the help that they need. And I know that you're already doing that work, I know there are lots of people doing that work. Maybe this will be the tipping point to help them get to that point. And I, so I say all that so that you understand that I don't think anyone up here is, is, you know, like, oh, we just want the park to turn into a, you know, a public toilet. No one wants that, no one wants that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ginger?
Hi, thanks so much for all the work that was done on this ordinance. It's come a really long way, and I think you guys have a lot to be proud of in the work that you've done. I also, I just wanted to second what Sue Higbee was saying around having another person in the room, or, you know, what Mayor LaZan was saying about having it be recorded. I just think safety, you know, whenever I've been working with vulnerable populations, often they have access to an advocate, so maybe that's something too, through the social service or the restorative justice center, that there can be an advocate that goes with people to help them understand what's happening, what their rights are, and how to have this process be as transparent and equitable as possible. Because as Counselor Spaulding was just mentioning, these really are very vulnerable people in our communities that might, you know, they may or may not even understand the literature that they're given. There, there's, there's just a lot to consider. So I really want to appreciate everyone's thoughtfulness and all the time and energy that's gone into this. And I appreciate you listening, thanks so much.
Thank you. Amy Gofford?
Yeah, I just want to say something very similar to what Ginger just said, that maybe the section about the hearing could either specify or give some examples of like who would be allowed to attend. So someone might want to bring a family member or a translator or a lawyer if they've had previous involvement with law or the court system, even though this is separate from that, or some kind of support staff. So I don't know if that could be specified in the procedure that, you know, and putting some kind of bounds on, so it's not a public spectacle, but like having them, you know, just clarifying that they are allowed to have certain types or certain numbers of people come attend with them.
Thank you. So with regard to the hearing, Counsel, what I'd ask you to consider is that there is nothing, my concern, straight up, is that it could be politicized. In that if counsel, if there were counselors who were appointed to the decision-making process, that's very different than what you had mentioned earlier, Counselor Spaulding, which was, could a counselor be there? Now, the manager and I work closely together, he's been very gracious, as have I, on several occasions when he has a meeting or I have a meeting, and I ask him, do you want to tag along? Or he asks me, do you want to tag along? He's not dumb. You know, I suspect that if there are certain counselors who said, well, I'd like to participate, I'd like to observe the first few hearings. If the chief said, I'd like to observe, do you have an objection? Nicholas would likely say, as long as the appellant doesn't have an objection? I don't have an objection. If, I mean, that's, the beauty of ordinances, they're easily changed. If it turns out that having one person in a judicial capacity doesn't work that well, and you should have three, then maybe we'll have three, maybe we'll have five. But I think we could, I think we could start with one. I think the manager is hearing what we're all saying loud and clear. And I, I have zero concerns about the manager allowing someone to observe or participate in a hearing as long as they're doing it for the right reasons. So that's how I feel about that part. And with that, a motion has been made and seconded to consider the policy warned the first time and move to a second reading. Yes?
I'm okay with that. If I may just ask a sort of follow-up, this is more of a procedural question than anything else. If the hearing section were to be amended to, I heard you, Mayor, say, recorded, for example, or if there were some useful and thoughtful compromise about inviting additional folks to that hearing, would that represent a substantive change in this ordinance? Would we have to go to first reading again?
No, there's, there's two sections. So what we're doing this evening, Counsel, I'm sorry, just so you're clear, there are, there are two separate documents. You have the actual ordinance itself, which has nothing about appeal process or, or issuance of orders of no trespass. And then you have the city policy. City policy and ordinance are two very, very different things. So once we get to item E on the agenda, I think we reviewed the policy pretty closely, and I'll be looking for a reading to put it on for approval coinciding with the second reading of the public conduct ordinance, should that pass. That, which we were looking for.
So if I can just reflect my, make sure I understand that correctly, that the city policy could see substantive changes based on the feedback that we heard this evening in the hearing section without having to redo the warning process, and that that could be moved forward, we could see a version of that before the next?
Yep, that's correct. We've got a number of weeks to, to work on. If, if you want to look at the policy and say, well, you know, personally, I think it should be in the policy that it is recorded and someone else should be present, even if they're simply present as an observer. So I think that would probably be a good idea, and I'll probably be suggesting that edit and certainly consider, you know, the, what you had talked about, Counselor. So that's, yes, sir?
Would it be unreasonable, Class C violations, to, I've heard a little stuff about this open container deal in the public? And, and it clearly says it's for open alcoholic beverage containers, but would you just go with that for the sake of the people in TB land here so that they would, they'd understand about this open container thing and how it, how it affects? so that they would, they'd understand about this open container thing and how it affects and what it really means?
You mean, open alcoholic beverage?
It's on, it's a class C violation.
Oh, you want to grab that one, Nicholas?
Yeah, it's, it's just, if you're, if you're drinking alcohol in a, in a park playground outside of like Heritage Festival where we have a special permit, or if there were a special event where drinking were allowed, if you're out there right now, for example, drinking in an open container, that would be considered a violation.
Now, also, it says something about in cars, let me see, some, we've got a glotzel on this.
I think it's if you're parked in a public place, right, chief? Is that the reference?
Why I'm saying this, sir, is so that you'll get this cloud out of the way.
Yeah.
I'm trying to help.
Thank you, no, I hear you.
And it's just that there's people who watch MTV tonight that, and when they hear about this open container thing, they're, they're going to want to know a little bit more about it, and that's why I'm giving you that.
Thank you.
Asking you to explain to them that this is probably not anywhere in here as stringent as you might think.
I, yes, I-
It's just that you only have certain places you can do it.
Correct, thank you. Thank you, yes. So this is, this is basically, you know, kind of, it's, it's current practice, right? It's, it's if you have an open container on a park playground or in a parked vehicle on a, you know, on a public lot, that would be the violation. So thank you, yes.
That'd be a big mistake.
Yes, correct.
You could, could you be parked in your driveway drinking? I don't know. Uh, no. Jeez, Lopez. Just so you know, if there is an intent to operate a motor vehicle, I mean, I suppose if it was a motor vehicle that was up on cement blocks, chief, you might let it slide, but if there were keys nearby-
Also just hoping the chief explained it.
Okay, I want to say thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, counselor?
Can I just ask a clarifying question? That's a good point, and it only says alcoholic beverage. There are more than alcoholic beverages now. Should it include other things? And then when it says no smoking, does that include vaping?
It could include vaping, we can actually add that in there.
Because that's, these are, like, you know, can you vape, can you vape cannabis downtown in the park, but you can't actually smoke?
You're not, so to be clear, did you say cannabis?
Yes.
Because, yeah, because there's laws, obviously, around cannabis.
I'm just saying, you're, you're, you're saying that there's, you know, you can't smoke, but if someone's like, hey, I can vape downtown, I'm just going to go down and vape.
Certainly, we can certainly add that into a dress.
Not that I want to create more problems for people, but I think you, if you're going to have rules about things, you should probably try to not have loopholes.
Sounds like a reasonable addition, chief. Smoking or vaping, then that would pretty much cover it. So is that okay with the mover and the seconder, that we make that particular change? Okay, so the, so the ordinance and that is section, just to be clear, chief, that would be under which section?
Were you looking at policy?
That's in the policy.
Oh, it's in the policy. We don't even need that this evening. We can do that, yeah, we can do that. So, counsel, there is a motion, there is a second. Everyone understand the motion and the second, which is to consider the change to the ordinance, chapter twenty-five, conduct in parks and public spaces, having been read one time or the first time, and move that to a second reading. Everyone understand the motion? All those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Okay, one, that would be one, you are both ayes. Okay, motion carries, thank you very much. Counselor, item eight E on the agenda, this is reviewing the city policy for notice of trespass on city property. We don't need any action on this, if you're all okay.
I've got your ass.
We're going to move on. If you have any proposed changes to the policy, which, just to be clear, if you come to the next meeting and we're reviewing the policy and you make substantive changes, that's okay. Policy and ordinance are two very different things in terms of the rules and procedures. So if you could get any changes, you know, so if we do end up making changes, I, you know, I am going to think about whether we should have more than one person, I'm not sure whether it's necessary, but I've heard a lot of good suggestions, and I'm going to take those under advisement. Yes, sir?
Could you like pass New Business? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, sir. I've been on New Business for about two hours now. Did you have a question about something?
Yes, I do, sir.
Okay, come on up.
Evening, I'm Gary Hall, senior. I've been here, talked with you before-
Yeah.
About the twenty-one Vine Street property.
Yes.
I haven't been notified, but I've been told by neighbors, there was a whole group of people went down there, they're going to tear it down. They haven't settled with me yet.
Okay.
I've been working with FEMA, I've been to SBA today, I've been to a small loan in Montclair, because SBA is only one place in the state, in Williston.
Yeah.
The city, I went to see them after going to FEMA. We all met up here on top of the hill. They wanted to give me an offer of forty thousand dollars for a house that we had over a hundred and ten thousand dollar taxes on. I rebuilt that garage for my daughter. My name's still on the property, I'm divorced from my ex-wife, she's in Virginia. I'll be damned if I'm going to sell that house for forty thousand dollars to the city of Barry. I will stand my ground, I don't care.
Okay.
I've been ordered off it by Berry PD, because I was staying there to protect the interest with everybody, the same problems you were talking about earlier, coming in, dumping paint, breaking windows, stealing copper out of our house, stealing whatever they could get. I was told to leave the property because it made it a different situation, because it was locked with the city lawyer, last I knew, through my daughter, that it's on hold until we get this discussed.
Mm-hmm.
I do not want that house tore down. If anybody's going to tear it down, let me tear it down. I'll save the top floor and destroy the rest, and you can have the blocks to go against the bank, which I suggested the city a long time ago. If you can't dredge it deep enough, and what was dredged already last year, go down on Berlin Street Bridge, you can see the sand coming right down again. The state of Vermont will let, not let you dredge it, okay? That's what I've heard. I've also heard that they're going to dredge all the way, the whole Winuski River in the next two years. I hope they do. They ain't going to kill no fish, they ain't going to hurt nothing. I helped build a road from Woodstock, Vermont, all the way back to Bethel, I volunteered my time. I took the same truck that went through the flood and ruined it, and I had it out there on that much gravel, I didn't care. I had shovels with me, I had generators, and I passed them out and saved lives along the way. I put my life on the line. When we got done going to Bethel, because I had to turn people around because they couldn't get to their homes, the down-country people own land in Vermont, we had to check every vehicle in the Brook, whether it be a camper or whatever. I heard way down by Rochester, there was a dam further down, I can't remember if it was Wilder Dam or what it was, two guys lost their lives trying to save caskets from the cemetery in Rochester. I feel real bad for them. I still go back and visit those people. I'm a good person, I'm trying to build some land in West Thompson, trying to build something special for my daughter because she lost everything. She was a boy scout leader, she was in Eden, Vermont, when this all happened. If I hadn't gotten down there, two dogs would have drowned too, because they were on the first floor. We had forty-one inches of water come through that house, fifty-one inches through the garage. I know it looks like a disaster down there. But that was our home. I worked hard for ten years, it was a foreclosure in Barry. At the last minute, I had to buy flood insurance. The first year of flood, you know what they gave me after it tore out the bulkhead and my brand-new furnace and everything else in the basement? They gave me roughly a thousand bucks. You know what FEMA gave me? One dollar. And I never cashed that check, but it went through the flood, the last one, and it took all our belongings, all our family pictures and everything. Because I was going to put a furnace on the first floor to avoid the second floor, I put all brand-new copper in, changed it, bought the new furnace, that was in the garage, it got flooded with fifty-one inches of water, along with new electrical panels and everything. I have nothing against you people, but the answer is, if I have to go to be governor of next year, I will go to fight this, because I'm, at this point, mad as hell, it's an old saying, I'm not going to take it no more. I live on my mountain, FEMA didn't pay me a cent when the Brook let go and it washed out all my road. And I'm a hard worker, I've done everything. Twenty-three years in the military in the state of Vermont, I've been to Germany, I can run every heavy equipment there is. I felt bad when we tried to save our neighbors and you guys lost a loader, because we couldn't start it back up. I also felt bad for everybody else that lost. I've been through the floods, I've volunteered my service down at the trailer park, put my truck through hell because the police needed their help. I was part of a rescue squad, I've been in the fire department, everything, all my life. I hate to see people get hurt, they're all human beings, I don't care what their lifestyle is, okay? And the police have their job to do. And I think this ordinance is great you're coming up with. That's not the place for smoking, it's supposed to be a family get-together. I can remember seeing Santa Claus come out there. I love the decorations the city puts out, okay? I can remember when we had the big bells. I've been in this city for quite a few years. My dad owned a TV business right on Depot Square, it's now a bar. We used to kid everybody because the floor went downhill, come to Hall's store, you come right to the cash register where all the TVs were. It was a joke. But that building has now been rebuilt, it's a nice restaurant. And I'm also the flower guy. If anybody ever been to Dunkin' Donuts, right across from that bar, I walk in there and get flowers before they go to hell, in plain language, it's taught me to swear. And I take them to Dunkin' Donuts, or I walk up and down your different businesses, and I walk in and find a lady and give her a fresh rose. I said, this is from your husband or your boyfriend, he told me up here to bring it to you. It makes their day to see him smile. Same with our health department, when they're down buying Dunkin' Donuts coffee in the morning. Whenever I have the extra money, I spend it, I don't care. It's called paying it forward.
Mm-hmm.
It's the way I was brought up. And I'm mad as hell about the state not letting them dredge these rivers when we dug out, root all the way up through, we dug everything out of the rivers to build a new road, to come all the way back to Bethel, because there were so many people stranded, there was other peoples that couldn't get medicine. The Vermont National Guard didn't show up until we were about halfway back through. And I felt bad about that, because I was a member of the Vermont National Guard. They had the equipment, they could have dropped in food, medicine, but they were too late. And I read it on Craigslist years ago. But I'm not going to keep rattling on, because I know you've got a lot of stuff going on. But please contact me, I will leave my phone number tomorrow, because I heard about this in two minutes tonight from two different neighbors, that my house is going to be tore down, and it was going to be history, along with the neighbor's house next to it. And I have a trailer down there, that's full of stuff that's got to be moved, I got to register it before I move it, because if I move it, the police force are going to take and lock me up, or give me another ticket, because I want it out of here. They threatened to move it already when they told me I had to leave. I put it on the neighbor's property, so it wouldn't get towed that night. It is full of Ethan Allen lumber, and if you know anything about Ethan Allen furniture, it's like the best lumber you can buy, and you can make cabinets. And I bought it right from a guy, and I earned it honestly, like I do everything in this life. I'm going to stop right now, but I will leave my phone number tomorrow.
Okay, do that, Gary, we'll make sure we get ahold of you.
I'm trying to take a knock into you guys, I think you do great things for the city. I've talked to many of you members, I couldn't vote for you, because I'm lined up in West Thompson to vote. And I talked with you many times, and I've met you and watched you go through different things, and keep the city safe. There is a lot of people out there I talk to every day that want the same thing for their children. I'm sick and tired of hearing, oh, he had eight ODs this week because drug dealers brought in and they give them to these young kids. My grandchildren are, thank God, out of this area right now, because it just gets worse. And it's not just Barry, it's all over the state. You can't walk on a back road, now where I've been, down in Stratford, which is a very rich town, working, moving lumber from one pile to the other to make some money, to try to get, get ahead. And I'm a veteran, I have that money coming in, plus I got Social Security, but I can't do everything at once I want to do. I'm working hard for what I get. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, counsel, we are at item eight F on the agenda, I think, I think you're all, I'm sorry? Oh, my goodness, how many times have I done this to you? If we had like a dollar jar-
A few.
You'd be wealthy. I'm sorry. Counsel, we're at item eight C on the agenda, this is to adopt the flood resiliency plan. Counsel Augustine?
Thank you, Mayor. City manager is bringing up a PowerPoint, but I do also just want to note that the action I'm asking for this evening is to vote to adopt the flood resiliency plan in the form it was presented in your packet, which immediately precedes my presentation in the packet. What I have done in this presentation is tried to do a high-level overview of the significant changes to the plan, and I had also sent you all out the line-by-line so that you could take a look at that. So our goals this evening, review the changes to the plan, which are in this presentation here, review the most significant and substantive change to the plan, which is the prioritization rubric, have any final discussion and conversation, and then ideally at the end of this list, we get to a vote to adopt the updated plan. So, all right, there were twenty-one projects outlined in the flood resiliency plan that was adopted in November of 2024, our first version of it. From that plan, five of the projects that we outlined were moved to complete it, four of them saw significant rewrites or changes, two were combined down into one, that's the infill one that I mentioned at our last presentation, ten received sort of additional process updates, here's where we are, or very small changes to them. So the ones that we had discussed previously and that are now moved to complete are the citywide inundation modeling, funding opportunities for community building, removing the railroad trestle, about which more in a moment, and the seminary street parking lot development, the housing revolving loan fund. And a brief note on the railroad trestle, we had a phenomenal party on Saturday, this past Saturday, if you saw the city's social media accounts, you saw Peter Anthony taking a big ol' whack to a model trestle, it was, it was actually delightfully cathartic. We grilled, we enjoyed company, we talked to people about the future of the North End, and we celebrated the fact that we could no longer look down the river and see the railroad trestle. And it is my hope that we find more opportunities going forward to celebrate major steps forward like that one was. So, that is moved to complete, changed. These are the sort of major changes. As I said, a lot of other pieces got some small changes. Stormwater system analysis and upsizing. As we had discussed at a previous meeting, that has been changed to repair, upsizing, and maintenance, and it's been moved out of the data initial section and into the infrastructure section, because it's no longer gathering information, we have commissioned that study, and now we're going to take action on that study. Infill development, as I just, as I mentioned previously, I still don't know how this one got through me, but it was in two places, it's now in one, and that one is under housing. Resident education, what I heard from counsel was that the previous workshops and that work was successful and that we should keep doing it, so that is simply updated to include the work that we have done, and say we will continue doing that work going forward. Same forces and led flood, excuse me, citizen-led neighborhood knowledge. I would also note that I did make a change, and I apologize that I didn't make this change on this side, in the actual plan, I changed this to resident-led neighborhood knowledge rather than citizen. And finally, continued investment in city staff in conversation with the manager, and as I presented to you previously, there is new language in that section affirming the city commitment to ensuring staff capacity for projects as part of seeking funding for future projects. We added, we had discussed adding a series of them, and based on counsel feedback, as well as reviewing the future projects here, are the new projects that we will be hearing more about in coming months. Number one, exploring strategic riverbed maintenance, which we just heard, a lot of people are very interested in learning more about, so that has been added under information and data gathering. Improve emergency access to the public safety building. Counsel may remember that, well, we all know that when Main Street floods, emergency vehicles cannot get out of the public safety building. There have been tentative plans for some time now to ensure a secondary access in emergency situations, this moves that into our front view. Resolve the Courier Park and Potash Brook flooding. This is, this is kind of a big one, I'll be honest, but we were presented with several options and ideas by the river project folks for both additional floodplain expansion and other debris racks and other things that would significantly improve the flooding outlook for the Courier Park area. And so this has now been moved into the main plan to start to pursue those in more detail. Develop Wabi Park for housing, had been from the future projects section, and we've been talking about this a little bit on and off, there are- There are active conversations going on about this, but that is now again front and center under housing development, repair, and develop a North End master plan again under housing development and repair. Added to future projects, these I've added both based on council feedback and based on some resident feedback that we heard, green infrastructure and traffic calming, finding ways to combine better stormwater management in ways that also improve our streetscape generally. Install a river gauge on the Stevens branch. It's been on and off for a little while, and I think what we, one of the things we've heard from our regional meetings is the more river gauges, the more data and the better we can plan for the future in addition to immediate emergency response beyond just our current river bridge, which is what, a smiley face?
A smiley and a sad face.
Yeah, a smiley face and a sad face painted on concrete. That is, that is not science. We would like to move forward in that. Floodplain restoration at Spalding High School. This is, this I pulled from a couple of different plans. And just a brief note on these, when projects are moved into the main plan, as with everything else, I filled out the sections about where these are named in plans, what the city's role is, what progress has been made so far, and if there are any next steps already identified that's filled out. For future projects, these exist in a sort of one-sentence state until we move them into the main plan, at which point we do have to provide more backup for them. So floodplain restoration at Spalding High School is named in a couple of plans if we, it's a future project at this moment. Upsize City Hall generator currently inadequate to emergency situations. It would be, it would benefit us to have electricity at City Hall in any circumstance. Explore, and these two pieces both came from some really excellent resident feedback. Explore ordinance around large movable objects in the floodplain. The idea here is that if there are dumpsters that could ease, in a floodplain that could get flooded and then dumped in the river and be part of debris or damage river walls, there might be ordinance that we could explore around securing those and preventing those problems in the first place. And also installing debris catchers. These, there are a couple of spots already identified in the river project list where debris catchers might benefit catching things further upstream and preventing bridge buildup and other things like that, and frankly, like safety issues if they get going enough. So that's also still in the future project, but that is a, that is a potential future project for us to move forward in the future. At the rate at which we are moving projects out of the main plan, I wanted to significantly add to future projects so that we could keep that moving.
I know that earlier in the process, I know we've been dealing with this process for a while, we talked about an audible alarm in the event that we're in a situation of emergency, and we've never really talked anymore about that. So just going through this over the weekend, it came to mind, and I just kind of wanted to bring that back up for a discussion to kind of just not let it die out. I know that there are a lot of situations that happen in other parts of the country that they have those audible alarms and that that's something that we identified after the flood of '23 that our city could potentially use to be helpful.
Yeah, thank you, Counselors. So I would be very happy to add the possibility of an audible alarm. Right now in section 2.2, we ask for communications upgrades. The city should make communications upgrades both in emergency alerts as well as day-to-day outreach around regular activities. I can drop a line in about consider an audible alarm in the case of emergency situation?
Or? I mean, if we're going to install a river gauge, could we consider putting a camera on the river gauge so that people wouldn't have to call dispatch? They could literally go on the city webpage and see what the river gauge looks like.
I, I love that. Right now, river gauge is in future projects, but river gauge is high on my list for the fall update to move forward into the main project because there are a couple of things I think by the fall, we think we're going to move out of the main projects, but I love the idea of the camera. And I will add if that sounds audible alarm.
That expensive? I mean, they're not, it's a fairly primitive piece of equipment.
It's not. Yeah. The river gauge is about, it's not overwhelmingly expensive. I think it's between $30,000, $40,000.
I remember it was $35,000.
Yeah, and the maintenance, the maintenance is about $15,000 a year annually, so that's, it's not prohibitively expensive.
That's an extremely doable.
Three bucks.
I mean, you may have to repaint it, so six. But yes, I, I think that's an extremely doable project. Right now, it's, it's in future project simply because I'm trying to keep the plan around 20, but I would, that's high in my mind for moving forward in the fall.
I think there was language in the flood bill about this, I believe.
Yes.
So that could help.
Basically requires the state to work with us if we ask for one, if I'm remembering correctly. Thank you. Was that all the questions on future projects?
Yeah.
I have questions, but I have a, they're just all over the place. So if you want to finish them, then I'll save you a while.
Yeah, we can do it with you. Prioritization rubric. Okay, this is the most substantive change, and this is the last piece of my presentation, so there's lots of time for conversation afterwards. This is the most substantive change to the, the plan. This had been requested for the first adoption of the plan, and then we just really wanted to move it forward, so it didn't get put in. The idea here is, and there's a whole page in the plan that explains sort of what the numbers mean and sort of how they're, how they're to be interpreted. What I am proposing is each project, and I have done this initially for all of the pieces of the plan, based on, again, this is, you know, based on what I had written and based on my read and understanding of sort of our presentations and our conversations. That's why the numbers have been assigned the way they have. So each project is numbered within three categories: funding, urgency, and public feedback. So funding and urgency graded on a scale of one to five with one as the high end and five as the low. A one for funding would be, yep, we have money in hand, we are, we are well on our way, and a five would be, who even knows? This is a $200 million project and we got nothing. And urgency is the same. One is, and I put a little bit of language in the rubric for a one for urgency, sort of indicating that there had been public process and that major, like all the major stakeholders were in agreement that this was urgent. And the, the information for that, when I graded it, was based on, did this appear in public plan, in, in city plans? Did this come up in any of the notes from public forums? So that's what would get urgency, a one, like the city has identified this as a priority. Residents have all said they badly want this to happen. There may be other sources of data that say this is an urgent. And five is a like, yeah, I mean, we like it, we want it to happen, but do we need to set ourselves on fire doing it right now? Maybe not. The idea here is that like in golf, a low score puts it higher on the list. So, so a project could theoretically be a three because the last piece of this is public feedback. And this is the last, once, if counsel approves of the way this rubric is done, my goal will be to do public surveys and present every single item from this list and say, please rank these from one to 21. One is the projects that you think is absolutely the most important and urgent project, and 21 is down. Rank every single one from one to 21. So in theory, a project could score three. We have the funding in hand, it's been considered highly urgent, and our public feedback process has identified this as the number one project. And there will be math involved because, you know, a million people will be grading a million things, and that'll be my headache. But like in theory, the lowest you could get would be a three and the highest would be a 31. So, Counselor.
Yeah, well, my question is specifically about this. I love the idea of, of getting community feedback. My, my specific question is about something like 3.1, which is relocate the DPW garage out of the floodplain. The funding is one, the urgency is one. We're already moving down that road. Does it make sense to ask the public what they think about that and get a score? Because we're already going there?
I mean, it's a fair, it's a fair point. I guess I'm thinking that if we're going to ask people about things, we should ask them about everything.
Well, right, but you know, if they all say, hey, I don't think it's that important because they haven't toured the public's garage and they think something else is more important, but we're, but this is a one for us for funding and urgency, and we're already, we've signed the papers, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, so I guess this is why there's three sections, right? Like it's possible that this does not score, that a project doesn't score high. And it's also possible that a project scores a five on funding, like the funding is nowhere, but it's number one in urgency and the public rates it as like, hi. My idea for the rubric for the first, for this summer's iteration of the plan is that it's a feedback mechanism. It sort of tells us where things are out of sync. Right? If, if, if there's a project that we are thinking is a number one and we get like all the feedback says no, that's something for us to look at more closely. So yeah, there are some projects we're pretty far, we're pretty far down the path on, and the, the public feedback mechanism, it's going to be sort of more useful as we keep cycling through going forward and we keep presenting things going forward. You know, it's not a perfect match to what we're doing so far in its first implementation, but I, no, I, I take your point. I, I guess I would say that there's three sections and that that's a useful piece of feedback.
Counselor Deary?
I, I like the, you know, the rubric. The only thing I would change is just the numerical values. When you go one to five, it gives an opportunity to be three right in the middle. If you were to go to six, it then makes people either choose below or above 50%. So then it really makes them decide, you know, is this something that we really want to work with? And then we're kind of leaning on that edge or is it something that we're really not wanting to work with, but it's there? So it's not like a middle ground, but it actually differentiates between, you know, something that we really kind of don't want to work on, but it's there, but something that we really kind of do want to work on. Does that make sense?
I think so. I wonder if, so I scrolled back to the, the descriptions of the threes in the rubric. I'll be honest, like one to five was kind of arbitrary. Right? So yeah, fair. One to five was totally arbitrary. What I tried to strike with three is that I think there are projects for which there is kind of a squishy middle ground. And I think that's also kind of maybe a useful indicator, that there is a weird squishy middle ground there. And that, again, it, it asks us to look more closely at something. So a project could be a one in one category, a three in another category, and we're like, oh, they're a little disparate. Or, or they rank very highly or very low in the public feedback. I guess I would say if it were the single, like one, if it were only getting a number of one through six, I think that makes total sense. Like we should pick a side, right? You know, it's out of 100 or whatever, like what the percent is, but I don't know. I, I would look to other counselors if there's any other, I think it's an interesting point is I feel like three serves kind of a wishy-washy is kind of useful, maybe as a piece of information, maybe.
I agree that I think the wishy-washy is useful. There are things that people just don't feel strongly about, and that's a useful place to have it. It's also easier to add 10.
Yeah.
Than 12.
Yeah, fair. There's more math. There's less math. Less of the math. That's fair.
But, but it's an interesting, it's an interesting take on it.
I would argue against being squishy on any of these things. And I mean, that's just my take is that when we're as a counselor deciding on project, that to me, I don't feel like I have room to be squishy. Like I have room to decide one through six, whether, you know, if I like it, you know, maybe it's a high, a lower score, you know, we're talking about a two or maybe a one, but I can't give it a three in the, I can't just go in the middle. But it actually makes me decide whether I want to support something on the more than 50% end or if it's something that I do support, but it's something that I'm not willing to go the extra mile for as opposed to something that's cut and dry, like, you know what? I don't like this, I'm not going to work with it. I really like this, I'll give it a one. But it just doesn't give me that middle road to be like squishy and say, yeah, I kind of like this, I kind of don't like this. It, it's just something that I've been working on in, in school with.
So I, in the, in the rubric page, I, I described what each number could, could mean and how I applied them to the other sections of the plan. So the three for funding is funding exists in theory, but we have not yet explicitly identified it. And that is, that is a sort of a step up from like, I mean, we've talked about like maybe this could get funded, but we have no idea. And it's a step below. There is a grant out there, we just haven't done the application. So I'm, I'm trying to verbally sort of qualitatively describe that middle ground. And then for urgency, the three is this project has been mentioned in several plans or forums, and there's a general shared consensus about it versus this project. And then the, the below that is this is a nice to have project that has been mentioned once or twice is the two, and, excuse me, is the four. And then the two, which is the up a step, is this project has been frequently mentioned has the strong support of council, residents, and/or experts to move it forward. Like we get a couple of those boxes because the one is this project has been identified as an existential necessity for the city with strong support of council, residents, and experts. So I, what I tried to do was move it along in continuance and maybe, I guess maybe what I'm arguing for is less of a, it falls on this side of this line and more of a like, when I read this list, which one of these do I think fits it best?
I like that perspective because, you know, just thinking about it numbers-wise, it makes me feel not so good. But when you describe it in that manner, that, you know, this would, you know, equal that particular value. I think it makes a whole lot more sense because if the project meets those qualifications, then we assign it that value. Absolutely.
Yeah, and that's what I've tried to, I've tried to create and qualitative, like I said, describe a sort of scale for those numbers.
Hi, Danielle Zarzki. Amanda, thanks so much for presenting on this, and I don't have anything to say about the rubric. I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm really excited to hear that you're working on the Courier Park Potash Brook flooding, that also the green infrastructure and the traffic calming that came up a lot on the master planning. So that's really exciting. And then the Spalding floodplain. And then the river gauge and the camera, I'd love to talk with you about that. We have somebody on the task force who's worked a lot with cameras for tracking, you know, water changes and things like that. So I think that person could be a good resource for you around that. And then maybe we could think about doing something like artsier or fun that could help us raise some money for that river gauge as well. And then I just had a question about the stormwater, and maybe it's more for Nicholas, but the, something I've heard of folks asking about and something we've seen is like where we have stormwater drains that are completely clogged with dirt, so they're not functioning anymore. Was that part of that, that analysis? And so like when they start doing the work, those are some of the things they're going to address? Thanks.
Yeah, I, I think we'll get some of that there. I mean, if you're talking about just storm drains on the street level that need attention, that's something to call the public works department, but I, I think we'll get some of that from the, the work that Roy's group is doing. Amy?
Yeah, this is a question on the public feedback. I don't want people not to complete the survey because if it just gets too long trying to rank things one to 21, I know I would have a lot of, I would probably have a hard time with something like, well, is this my 14 or my 15 and like how much time am I going to spend like on those versus people? It, it might just be easier for getting a good response and even just easier to set up in something like Survey Monkey or Microsoft Forms or whatever, just to make it like low, medium, high, or a one to three scale or a one to five scale. Just, I just don't want people to not respond because they get survey fatigue, like, oh, this is taking me too long, you know? You might have a simpler survey, maybe the same one to five kind of scale idea, and you might get a better response just because it wouldn't take people as long.
I think that's an extremely fair point, and that's something I was worried about too. I mean, I do really like the idea of getting a one through 21, but we could also like look at, we could look, have five categories or something like that and stick with the same one to five that we're in, in the other part of the plan.
Is the one to 21 because there's 21 projects?
Yes.
So you, shouldn't you just rank them?
Right, that's what, yeah. So you could in theory like create a survey where you just drag and drop and rank them. I think it is still a fair point that 21 is a lot of things to rank and that you might be forced to be making some like truly arbitrary decisions around the middle.
I thought you were saying, I'm sorry, I was confused. I'm like, I'm just catching up to what. I thought you were reading them every single one.
Oh, no, 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 no.
And I was like, why 21?
No.
Making more.
Yeah, no, 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 like, like drag and drop or like.
Okay, okay, okay. Got it. Thanks.
It's, you can do it, it just takes a while. I mean, I've had to rank projects one through 50. And it just takes, it takes a long time. You got to put it down and pick it up and put it down and pick it up and think about You got to put it down, and pick it up, and put it down, and pick it up, and think about whether your answers are accurate.
Yeah, it's a fair point, I, yeah.
It might be that you could have two different approaches. I mean, i- if you have the people who are interested enough to show up at a meeting about it, you could have an instrument that had a one, 21 ranking system, because they'd be likely to do it. If you're sending it out to, you know, my, you know, down-the-street neighbor who doesn't really care, you know, you're going to want a one-to-five, because if she, if she has to, you know, sort everything according to, you know, one to 21, it's more work than she's going to do.
Yeah.
Would it be helpful if you were ranking them within each category?
Yeah, I was just wondering, is there, like, a workable, for, the problem with that is, the categories are now lopsided. They were so neat and even when we started, and now we're adding more infrastructure projects, which is, like, progress, right? But.
I wonder if you pick your top three, and then at the end, you say, okay, now rank these, you know, out of your top.
Yeah.
You know, 10 projects, now rank all of those in order from one to 10.
Yeah.
I don't know. That might be more work. I love surveys.
If you use an Excel spreadsheet, actually, if you use an Excel spreadsheet and constantly sort it by value.
Yeah.
It, it actually is easier than it sounds.
Yes.
Because you keep looking at it, and you're like, nah, that's not it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then you'll, you know, say, okay, this, you know, number four should be six, and number six should be seven, then you sort it again. It's, it, it actually is easier, if you have the right tool.
Yeah.
It's easier than it sounds.
So here's, so here's what I'm pondering for a, um, a step forward, which is, I've worked closely with Tess Taylor on a lot of our surveying, online surveying in the past, because she has access to the city tools. What, how about, because this part of the, the plan can't get finalized until we finalize what's in the plan, either way. Tess and I can put our heads together and think about sort of accessible ways to do this, and then the really high-detail ways to do this, and come up with a tool that...
Make your people tested.
Well, yeah, and so, and all, so I, I'm just going to verbally talk my way through this. What I would like to do is, is perhaps present something to counselors. I will send something out and have you individually give me feedback on that, but I do also want to seek, because Amy's point is very well taken, I want to seek some measure of public feedback on that, but I also don't want to put, can you take a survey about this survey out on Front Porch Forum? That feels a little much. So here's what a, here's, I guess I'm talking my way through this, here's what I'll commit to, is we'll come up with a model, we'll send it to council. If anyone who's listening, still listening, first of all, thank you, would like to also have input on this survey, I would truly, deeply welcome it. Shoot me an email. I will also make sure that you have eyes on, on the survey as we go forward, and I will commit to, what's, it's the 17th, by mid-July, we will get something out, out to the public. Does that feel like a path forward for, okay? Thank you. All right, that is, actually, that's it. And we're already in the discussion part a little bit, so any other feedback or discussion on the plan?
I just have, um, under 3.2, for the Stormwater System Repair Upsizing and Maintenance, the funding is for, is that funding for Stormwater System Repair Upsizing and Maintenance, or is that, because we do have funding for the study, we've allocated the money for the study, so.
That's for the, the repair upsizing and maintenance, we have, because the, the study is effectively no longer in the plan, that's already been done. Okay, okay. So that's just for.
Hi!
Whoa.
You were off there.
Um, that's just, we don't currently have funding sources identified to rehabilitate our entire stormwater system.
Okay, okay, so I was just trying to understand that that's what it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It was, it's a bit, it was, I was like, well, we have the money, you just said we have the money.
It's for specifically doing the work that is recommended in the plan.
Okay. Um, we might want to, you, we might want to just make that more clear, so that people understand, because you're talking about the, um, that our partners, S R, SL are consulting, the city is serving as funder, the progress is, we've received this, we've allocated this, and then the next steps are, we'll receive the final results, but the next steps should really be.
Yeah, I think that maybe there's some, like, just slightly leftover language that isn't updated fully enough that's causing that confusion, so I appreciate that.
Okay.
Let me, um, make that, uh, so, to make more clear, um, so when we, uh, move to adopt this plan, please just know that that will be a change represented when I send a final version out, if I'm allowed to do that, that I will.
Of course.
That language to make it more clear.
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other feedback on the plan?
So council motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any other questions or discussion?
Very good job, Counsel Augustine, thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, motion carries.
Just like cheating to vote on.
And our council, we will move on to item 8F on the agenda, and this is the discussion regarding the Neighborly Berry Initiative. Counselor Hillgartner?
Yes, um, and you all received, I don't have a PowerPoint. You all did receive a copy of the most recent draft. I am very clear that this is a draft. And I just had some comments I wanted to make about it before we open it up for discussion. When I shared a very early draft of the NBI with our town manager, and he discussed it with Chief Hale and other city staff members, their consensus was that it did not belong in ordinance. And I just want to be clear that I've never thought of this as an ordinance. I don't see this as a legalistic framework of rules to be enforced, so I agree that it doesn't belong in ordinance. However, I could not disagree more strongly with the notion that because it isn't designed as an ordinance, it shouldn't be a city-administered program. I do envision a city-coordinated effort to address a set of related, community-wide issues and problems, and the city belongs in the center of this effort. I think of it as, you know, we are talking about development, and we're talking about things like, you know, you can't have housing development if you don't have sewer capacity, and you don't have drinking water capacity. This is, this is part of that development thing, but it's dealing with the human community, the human community, the human infrastructure, the how do we, how do we relate to one another? And I really do think the city has a role to play in that. I think that the city government is uniquely situated to provide oversight and to facilitate communication, as well as being in an enviable position to support the effective collaboration with the institutions and groups which are already working to address pieces of these extremely complex issues. As with something like our excellent flood resiliency plan, there's certainly a role for the city, and a need for city resources, both staff and funding, and an opportunity for the city to take a proactive role in efforts that could serve as a model for other municipalities and townships. We are not alone in these lifestyle problems, and these issues of, you know, how do we relate to one another as community? We're not alone in that, so maybe we could come up with something that would be a model for other, other communities. As I've talked about this initiative with people, several themes have emerged. One is that everyone, everyone I've talked to loved the Berry Bees. They just loved them, and most of them were very enthusiastic about the neighborhood patrolers portion of the proposal. So maybe that's something we need to explore. I, you know, I don't know the history of what happened to that program. A lot of people said, oh, it was great, I don't know why this, why the police department and the city stopped doing it. I don't know either, but I'm reflecting that back, that there may be some, something that could be done along those lines. People were also, several groups that are already doing excellent work in Berry had good ideas about the way the Neighborly Berry Initiative could dovetail with and support their efforts. And they were also enthusiastic about the improved communication and more effective cooperation that having a city staff person coordinating the initiative would allow for. Several people got very excited about collaborative opportunities for community education and volunteer training. While it may be true that the Neighborly Berry Initiative, with the significant exception of the neighborhood patrolers, might be done as a purely volunteer effort, one serious concern that was raised was that without concerted and intentional efforts to broaden the volunteer base, which a city coordinator would provide, the default expectation might be that the responsibility for making things happen would devolve onto the people who are already actively volunteering. So I would hear occasionally from people, oh, our church is doing this, and, but we're, we can't take on anything else, we're all pretty stretched thin. And I think that, that it's very important to recognize that there are people who are involved in doing things, and one of the strengths of this initiative that I'm proposing is that there's a very low threshold for some people to get into this. You know, there are some very, very easily accessible ways for people to engage, and we really need to expand who, who gets engaged with, with our, our city, and not start with, you know, the, what you, Mayor Lozong, you were referencing, the amount of work it takes to be on a committee, you know? Don't start there if you want, you know, start with, you know, you can get a bunch of your friends together and go pick litter, which is much, a much lower threshold. I think the other piece that's really important for the city is that this is a way to demonstrate concern for all our residents, and propose a positive plan of action that does address problems all of us recognize. And that establishes, you know, our, as a government, city government body, our commitment to a safe and good place, a good Berry for everybody. And I think we can treat the Neighborly Berry Initiative as an important quality-of-life improvement strategy for the entire city, including regular product, progress updates to council on its efforts and goals, periodic evaluations, and that will keep it relevant and responsive to new needs as they arise. I welcome questions and comments.
Got a few. Have you, you know, we do have, um, a lot of support organizations, you mentioned a few of them, Bari Up, People's Health and Wellness, Good Sam, Rainbow Bridge, Aldrich. Have you spoken to all of them about?
I've spoken to most of them, not all of them. I haven't, actually, I haven't talked to Good Sam. I have talked with Aldrich, I've talked with, I haven't talked, I've had an email with Shauna Trader, but haven't gotten into a serious conversation. I've talked with the new, with Josh from Barrier Area Development, you know, I've talked with, I have talked with a lot of people, I haven't talked with everybody, because there's only one of me, but.
And how does the Aldrich feel?
The Aldrich.
They're the most visible, obviously, because of the hours, but how do they feel about it?
The Aldrich, they, they really like this idea, and they, you know, they told me some of the things that they're doing, and they, they were one of the groups that said it would be really helpful if they, there were some training piece for their volunteers, so that the person who's shoving books and comes in contact with either, you know, one of the marginalized members, or the scary people who use library, you know, that they have some strategies for how to be more comfortable with those. I think that, that Kristin and Garrett both were talking about how the, all these, all these members of our community are library patrons. I mean, some of, some of the marginalized people are in the library every single day, and that they're working with, the library is working with their staff to try to find ways to meet their needs, but they liked the idea of the city and a wider collection of Berry residents being involved as well.
You know, I mean, I like, and you and I had a very quick discussion, you know, and like I told you, why couldn't it be both, with the ordinance and?
I don't have a problem with.
And having this sort of initiative. My hope being that, okay, the ordinance would quickly become useless.
Right.
Because this program is successful.
That's, that was the other piece that, you know, I do think that the more successful than the Neighborly Berry Initiative is, the less necessary the ordinance is. And I also heard a lot of people expressing a need to feel like there was some mechanism for, for responding in a, you know, a accountability way.
Not everybody responds to kindness.
Right. And, you know, one of the comments that Jeannie at the Community Justice, Berry Justice Center said, she said that the thing that will make things like community service work, if we were to incorporate a community service piece into the policy governing how the ordinance is enforced, is relationships. And she said, this, this Berry Neighborly, the Neighborly Berry Initiative provides a mechanism for making those relationships, so that it's not just, okay, now you've been a bad person, you have to go do community surface, you know, service, it's, well, you know, here's where, what, what you're, you know, you can go and help Joe pick litter for an afternoon, or two days, or whatever it is, you know? And it's, oh, well, I can do that, I can go help Joe.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not punishment, it's, it's involvement in the community.
Understood. Any, yes?
I guess I just have some questions. One is that, to me, this feels duplicative of a lot of other work that's going on with service organizations, with people who have expertise and, and training, and are doing this full-time, which is not to say that the need is not deep and desperate for, for lots of support across a variety of ways, simply that they're already doing it really well. And I don't, I would not want to sort of introduce, I have been, I've attended a lot, a lot, a lot of meetings trying to coordinate city services, trying to make sure everyone is talking to each other, trying to make sure we are identifying problems and, and responding to challenges and things like that. And it is, it is brutally hard to coordinate, like, the people who are doing this full-time. I see, this, to me, feels, in its current form, and I like, I like a lot of things about this, just to be clear, but in its current form, it feels to me like there's, that this would add another layer of complication onto that, that would not necessarily move things forward. That's, I apologize, I said question, and it was really more of a comment. So how do you, how would you see this layering onto or layering within the existing network of service providers who are, who are doing this full-time?
I think what I would, what I would say is that the coordinator, you know, whoever the coordinator, you know, the hired, hired person who's organizing this, would be very clear about the not intruding on, you know, Good Sam, or, as you say, the people who are doing this full-time, doing all this, but being, being clear that we're not duplicating efforts that are already, you know, already in place, and, but that we're always asking that question, and what, what can we do? You know, what can the Neighborly Berry Initiative do to help you? What, what, you know, what do you see? And if they say nothing, we're fine, then good, there's nothing, they're fine, but we keep checking back to just make sure they're still fine, because they are very valuable, and they do a lot of really valuable work.
I guess, so for me to feel comfortable about moving that forward, I, I guess I would hope that we could seek more input from the service providers, because my, my experience in asking them, what do you need, has been that they are out in the middle of night checking on folks, and trying to catch up on sleep when they can, and I, I am, it's tough to say, here's, here's what I need, when you're being asked by an outside organization. I've been, I've been both in the position of asking someone, an organization, what you need, and I've been in the position of people asking me, well, what do you need? And that is, that is a really hard thing to layer on top of what is already very difficult work. I guess I will just, I will say, so that, that's a concern I have. And I also, and there are also people doing that, that coordinating work, I also have some, some budget concerns, we're, just barely got a recreation coordinator back in, and our current staff capacity with the police department, with the incredible social worker who works with the police department, is already, like, way overmaxed out. So between that existing staff capacity and the budget capacity, I don't know where the, the give is, I don't know where we can make space. So that's a, so that's just a concern I have as well.
Counsel with you?
So I have to agree with Counsel Augustine about putting another layer on this. I mean, I think the policy of community service, quote-unquote, is an awesome idea. I mean, you do something wrong, you know, you're going to go help, but I But I think we don't need to have another layer of social work, so to speak. I mean, I do like the area of, you know, this, if you could add in the so-called community service, but to put a whole nother layer on top of the social work, I have to agree with Counselor Willman and Guston on that.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I can just add some of the the city concerns. And I, I agree with a lot of what Counselor Guston and Counselor Ruthier mentioned. From the city's perspective, it's, it really comes down to sort of risk liability. We ask people to go into pretty dangerous places all the time, but they're either, you know, they've either graduated from a fire academy or a police academy.
Can I stop you there for, if you're talking about the neighborhood patrolers? I did, in this version, the most recent, I did put that in the back in the police department's bailiwick because I was very, I could hear your.
Yeah. And I, I'm saying we, we wouldn't, and that's my next point. So we ask people to go into pretty dangerous situations and but they've been through a police academy or a fire academy. If a situation were to come into sort of our dispatch center and somebody were to say there's a fight at Courier Park, right, for for an argument, our dispatch, they make split second decisions all the time. They wouldn't sit there, well, gee, do I send a neighborhood patroler or a friendly neighbor? I'm gonna send an officer, right? Because if we send somebody who is a volunteer for the city, who, you know, despite their best efforts, may get injured, then we're looking at a potential workers' comp issue if that person has to miss their regular work or some sort of medical issue if they're, you know, maybe elderly and retired and doing this on on sort of a volunteer basis for that. So if we were, if we're asked, if we're called about a dangerous situation, our dispatch center would send our officers, right? Because they're, they're, and so I, the, and that's why I think having this be a, you know, not a city badge, not a city affiliation is important because if they are wearing a city badge, a city affiliation, and then they get hurt in that situation, we're liable and that's our insurance. So that, that's a real, you know, that's, again, I, I agree with what the mayor said that I don't think this has to compete with any sort of ordinance. I just believe it has to be separated from the city because of of that risk that that we take on. There's another, you know, collective bargaining issues. So for example, I don't know if we can have anybody else in this employed by the city or affiliated with the city providing emergency first aid because we have a union who covers our firefighters and EMTs, and that's union work. So just, I don't know if that's an issue. It could be. And then, you know, the city, you know, this notion that it has to be affiliated with, you know, we do really good work with a lot of organizations where we don't have a formal process. I'm thinking, you know, Berry Up, we sort of have an nexus with Tess as a board member, but there's no real, you know, there's no real fiduciary relationship with that organization at all. The River Access Task Force, there's no relation. I tried to bring that into the city committees and that didn't work. But we work really well with the River Access Task Force, even though we don't have a formal linkage. And so I don't think that lacking a formal linkage needs to mean the city's not involved somehow. There are ways the city can help something like this. For example, some of our officers could provide some training, for example. Some of our EMTs could provide some training for things that that these volunteers could do. But like I said, I, I think the idea is great. I just, my concern, as I mentioned in the memo, the cover memo is having that city nexus because that opens up a whole other implication for 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 the city government as a whole.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I support this. I think it's a great initiative. I hear those concerns about duplicating efforts, and I also hear the concerns about having volunteers who are working for the city. I think that could be handled with a waiver. I think you could handle that with a waiver. That's why we have a city attorney. So I would push back and say that I think if the biggest concern is that, you know, we have some negotiation, some union contract issues, then, you know, we can pull those things out. If we don't have the money to pay for things, then you can pull those things out. There's still parts of this that we can move forward with. And we, we've talked about how do we make downtown more accessible? When I was at the Park for Pride, everyone was having a great time. I didn't see anyone being harassed. I didn't see anyone being disruptive. I didn't see anyone, I mean, because when you have people downtown and they're, you know, participating and using the facility as intended, then there's really not a lot of other things going on. So I think if we can encourage more people to be coming downtown to use the park as a place to recreate, picking up trash to give back to their community, sitting on a bench to talk to someone who may need just a friendly face to talk to. I think there's a way for us to do this for, if we, if we can't hire an organizer right now, you know, maybe we can find a grant to do a part-time coordinator. Maybe we can find ways to make it possible that we can have a team of volunteers who are willing to participate. There are all these people who are saying, we want to help, we want to make Berry better, and they're really in support of the ordinance. I would hope they'd also be in support of this so we could sign them up as volunteers right away.
Yes, Counselor.
So in my work with social work and working to become a social worker, become a trauma therapist, this is some of the the framework I've seen in some other communities. And it's never, from my understanding, not been a community-led organization, but usually been a volunteer organization or like a nonprofit kind of organization. I think a lot of what is in this is great stuff that could be really helpful, but I'm not sure that it's in the right hands of of our city to be operating. Again, I really think that a lot of these things are very crucial to help things move forward, but I'm not sure that the city is the right proprietor of this this particular program. When I worked for the Salvation Army as the operations manager, one of the most difficult things was to navigate the social services, that there is no real clearinghouse of of social services where you can go and get that help that you need. And I think that this just kind of adds another layer to all of those things instead of having a direct source where somebody can go and get those, those kind of things. So I really, I love the work that you're doing on this. I do support this project. I just, as a counselor, I couldn't support this as it is.
Well, I mean, like I said, draft.
Yep.
It, it, I recognize that what I present is a bunch of ideas about what we can do and it would, you know, it isn't something that I'm expecting anyone can to vote up or down tonight because that's not the form that it's in. But I do, what I would like from counsel is some indication that this is something that I should continue to pursue. And I also would love to know whether the, whether the police department can actually explore reinstating some kind of program like the Berry Bees, which you had before. Because just the, just the overwhelming, you know, whenever, you know, anyone who looked at this, who's been in Berry long enough to remember the Berry Bees is, oh, oh, let's do the neighborhood patrolers because that's just like the Berry Bees and that was great. And, you know, there's all this excitement about it.
It couldn't be more different. The bees were specifically instructed never to engage, never to de-escalate, avoid. My son was one of the original bees and he enjoyed it. He loved being in the city. But they were specifically told that if someone is agitated, you use your radio, you get a cop there. If you see someone coming out of an ATM who looks a little uncomfortable because other people may be nearby, you ride up close to them and say, good evening, ma'am, how are you? Well, we'll be here for a bit. But they were absolutely trained, they were not trained in de-escalation, they were trained to observe and call.
And that could be, I mean.
And it was a great, and I agree, it was a great program.
This is an idea, you know, we.
It was a budget decision and a poor one.
I wasn't here for that. I wasn't here when the Berry Bees were operative, so I, you know, didn't know the, I knew, I guess a couple of people had said that they were Norwich cadets and, you know. You know, people who were.
But it was a great program. It really was.
So, you know, I mean, I'm, like I said, this, I brought this up for, to sort of gauge what counsel's thoughts are about whether or not this is worth me putting a whole ton of time, more time into or whether, you know, to get it to a form where it looks like something that you could put effort down with a budget and, you know, what, what we're talking about. And, you know, because I, you know, I, I am retired, but I'm not, not active. And I don't, I mean, I know, I mean, I could, if I had a public policy intern, you know, in a tiny honorarium for him or her for the summer, somebody who could, you know, research all the grant money that's available and come to get, you know, figure out in a specific way how much, how much oversight the city would be capable of putting in, how much, you know, because the coordinator might be the grant, you know, the person writes the grants to get the money in to cover the things that the city doesn't want to put in the budget rather than taking the staff member who's already here. You know, if I had, if I had a, you know, a miniscule little honorarium to offer some college kid, I could get a long way on this over the summer. And maybe that's something that counsel would be willing to consider doing.
Ellen Kay?
Yes, I just, I want to applaud Counselor Hillgartner for this thinking, you know, and clearly she said it was a draft. And so I'm a little disheartened that people are tearing it apart without really engaging enough with it. One of the things that it addresses that nothing else does, can that, that an ordinance does not, is what people in our community can do to understand, to feel more empowered, to not feel afraid, to not feel intimidated, and to make our community livable again. Not only, you know, the ordinance kind of pushes people out that are undesirable, and this is more of a bringing in. And yeah, it's a draft. I don't think it probably would work in in the draft it's in now. But that's the piece that that isn't addressed anywhere else is because this is, that was part of the impetus for, for the Public Safety Meeting and the proposal for the ordinance is that people are scared. And we all have a collective responsibility to learn how to be in a place where there is poverty, where there is our unhoused folks, where there are people struggling with addiction without losing our own humanity in the process as well. So I, I love that you've done this thinking and you've put this out. And I hope counsel will keep an open mind about how some of these things could absolutely augment anything else we do. And maybe, yeah, I'd love the vision where it makes the ordinance, you know, not needed anymore. But that's a long way down the road. But I, I hope that you will keep an open mind and think as much about this as you are thinking about enforcement.
Bern Rose?
Hi, thank you. I just want to say thank you so much to Counselor Hillgartner, a new counselor, a newer resident who has put so much effort into considering what can we all do together. She's a collaborator and she likes working with, bringing people together, and that's evident in how she's gone about in this draft and idea. And I just want to thank Ellen. She said much more eloquently my thoughts. If everything was working so well, we wouldn't need to have these explorations, we wouldn't need to have the conduct ordinances. And I had wondered, Amanda, Counselor Guston, has one of her projects was to look at street captains and building communities. And I think this could be a really nice collaboration with what Counselor Hillgartner is talking about. And it's not about us fixing other people, but it's about working together to have clear communications and to be able to come together in a way that's safe and healthy for everywhere, everyone. And I just think a question I just would ask, a rhetorical question, is how can we all participate in the growth and healing of our community collectively? I think that is the way that we are going to, to make our way forward here. And I see, Amanda, that you might have a thought about that. It was just something that, you know, I'm bouncing around and I, I appreciate that this is a time to, to have ideas and to lift up the ideas that we like so that they can become reality. And I thank you for all the consideration and time you've given everyone this evening. It's been a long meeting and my computer quit twice, so I'm on the third, third one. So thank you for letting me back in.
Thank you. Well, thank you for your persistence, Bern, and for speaking up. I, I did just want to update counsel. I mentioned this briefly at a previous meeting, but in this context, I wanted to provide full information, which is that I found and wrote a grant in close coordination with city staff to develop a pilot program for the street captain program. So we'll see. It's out there in the ether and we'll hear by the end of the month. So that piece is moving forward. That I had, again, worked closely with city staff to seek funding and wrote a grant for that already. So I just want to address that that is, that is moving.
Thanks. And, and I like how you are sitting right next to Counselor Hillgartner so the two of you can have all kinds of chats together.
Jeremy?
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to echo a number of the sentiments that were already said and say that I really hope Counselor Hillgartner continues to pursue this initiative. Is it perfect in its current form? No, it's not intended to be. But I think it's a great approach and makes for a great template for a future initiative that I think would be really good. And I think a lot of what I'm hearing in objection tonight is really more a fear of doing something new, right? A fear of being creative, a fear of trying something that hasn't been proven already yet. And I think that that's exactly the kind of attitude we need to adopt, right? Like cities all over the country and all over the world have tried to police their way out of these issues. All sorts of different approaches have, have been taken in all sorts of different ways. And some of, and a lot of them have very limited effect. And so I think thinking outside the box, thinking of ways to try new initiatives is exactly the approach we need right now. And I think it's also exactly the sort of approach that would give Berry City a great name and a good reputation, right? We want to create good media attention for ourselves. We want to show people that we're working on, you know, addressing the issues that are facing so many communities around us. How great would it be if we got in the papers and, and got that attention by saying, hey, look, we're building up our community in this great new innovative ways? So I want to applaud the counselor again for her work on that, and I really, really do hope she continues with it.
Thank you. Amy?
Hi, I just wanted to bring up something that was tried back around, I think, 2019, maybe it went back as far as 2018. I was a pretty new resident at that time, but the mayor at the time, Lucas Herring, and Detective Pompard, who I think is now the chief in the Berlin Police Department, were, were the ones involved in, in my neighborhood. But Mayor Herring at the time started an initiative of neighborhood watch groups with neighborhood watch implying not just crime, but these sorts of, of activities. And one of the things I liked about that is it was very hyperlocal. So it was more on the scale of like, you know, when you look at the city municipal plan, there's about 27 neighborhoods that are drawn there. You may or may not outline exactly with those, but I think they're kind of a good functional starting place for, for really getting to know a small number of people. I found them helpful. There's certainly ways that I got to know several people in my neighborhood much better. Unfortunately, given the timing, it kind of fell apart because COVID happened, so we quit meeting in person in 2020, I think, when a lot of those were, some of them were further along, some of them had been around for years in, in some parts of the city. But I think they all kind of fell apart when people quit meeting in person. And in my own part of town, there's certainly several of us who are still active and on calls like this, but some of the people who were involved actually sold their houses. So there was kind of attrition that way and it just kind of lost momentum. But what I liked about that model is rather than trying to have it be something citywide or try to have a model that rolled out the same way in every neighborhood, it was very driven by, hey, folks from the neighborhood show up, tell us what your issues are. In my particular neighborhood at the time, there were some very serious crime issues and there were some traffic problems and there were some vacant house issues. And that was kind of the three things we focused on. Very different, I think, in, in other neighborhoods. If you, if we started that conversation up again in my neighborhood, it would not be the same issues. You'd have flood, which was not even on our radar back then, and certain, certain of the crime and traffic issues have been, have been dealt with, like, you know, and, and it was focused on some really small concrete things, too, that could happen. Like, literally, like, there's a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign on Berlin Street that's, that came out of this, which a lot is still there, you know? Whether people go 25 miles an hour or not is another issue, but at least, like, we got the sign there, if nothing else. So, I liked that being grassroots up, in terms of what does a specific neighborhood need, rather than trying to figure out what the model would be. It was connected to city resources in terms of the mayor taking time, the detective taking time. I, I think it may have been different police in different neighborhoods. I don't know if they were volunteering their time, or it was overtime, or, or what it was for them, but we would have to wa, watch out for that. But it was really kind of just connecting us with city resources, rather than trying to take on a formal structure. And I think the idea was like, well, you work on whatever the issue is in your neighborhood at the time, and then that's going to change over time, depending on who shows up and depending on what the actual issues are in your neighborhood at the time. I think, you know, so COVID happened, and that's where a lot of things fell apart. Also, I think it's hard because, like, we were meeting at the auditorium, which is nowhere near, like, you know, my corner of the North End. And, you know, we don't have, like, a civic meeting space in the North End, so it'd be great to have a local meeting space. So that can be kind of a limiting thing, is identifying local places to meet, but I think, you know, and, and some of it I remember being in the, in the fall or winter. Maybe if we had met in the summer, we could have done a picnic, or met in the Fine Street Playground, or, or something like that. So, I think maybe dusting off and finding out if any of the neighborhood watch-type groups are still active, you know, if there's anything to learn from those, and maybe, maybe use those as a, as a model for the best, kind of thing.
Thank you. Ginger? Oh, sorry, AJ, you were, you were first.
Hi, thank you. So I would also like to commend Councilman Hillgartner for this initiative, for bringing forth this draft. I think it speaks to the need for a more holistic approach to the needs of the community. We're getting pretty good at acute compassion, so responding to emergency needs, but not so much for sustained or chronic empathy. There's a lack of trust and sustained community care. So this is more of an example of collectivism versus individualism, and I think that's something that's really necessary, and something that's been missing in terms of, in terms of governance. So this is about long-term work, and we need to support care workers instead of throwing our resources behind hero, heroes. So I would highly encourage you all to not be so dismissive of this draft that Councilman Hillgartner has so thoughtfully presented for you all. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ginger?
Hi, I feel like you guys are probably used to this, kind of pulling all-nighter here, so thank you. Thank you for all your commitments. And yeah, thank you, Beth, Councilwoman, for putting this together. I just wanted to highlight the Friendship Bench element. You know, the Friendship Bench is one of the most well-evidenced-based, globally researched mental health initiative, and it really does help in areas where people's mental health needs are not getting met. It consistently demonstrates improvements in depression, anxiety, suicide ideation, and also physical health outcomes for the most vulnerable people in a community. It also engages multi-generational elements of communities, especially elders in the community, that I think we have incredible resources in this community that our elders would really engage with, with this project. It's scalable, it's culturally adaptable, and it's really a promising template for a community-based mental health support worldwide, and, and it's incredibly well-researched. So I would just really hope, at minimum, we could look at that as something that the city might support. The training is very affordable for elders in the community. It started with grandmothers, but it certainly can be any elder in the community that goes through some support around CBT and basic trauma-informed conversations, and how to listen. And we could have a, a bench in every park that's a Friendship Bench, that really is a place for people to get support. And just, just being heard and feeling like you matter, and there's a place where someone's going to listen to you, it really does have a, an impact on our community and the safety of our community. So, thanks for the work, and, and I hope the council will consider this as an important step in the way we build community here and the way we support each other. Thanks so much.
Thank you. So, I mean, I'd like to see you continue the work. I mean, with any program, the devil's always in the details. So, you know, I think about this and say, okay, what if council wholeheartedly got behind it, the six categories of volunteers, three, six, five, six volunteers in each category? That's 36 volunteers. That's not always easy. So what if we all get behind it? I mean, it would almost seem like if you worked with some of the church groups and some of others, and said, look, these are the six categories we're considering, would you volunteer? Would you commit to volunteer for six months, so that you and we don't spend a lot of time building a program, only to find out that people don't really want to volunteer? And we've thrown this big party, and nobody's showing up.
I would also strongly encourage us, or, you know, to look beyond the churches, because, you know, I know my, I know my church, and, you know, the people are, people are active, and the churches are smaller than they were 30 years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Problem. So, you know, that, one of the concerns that I have about saying, oh, well, let's just leave it to the people who are already doing, who are already volunteering, let's, let's go ask them to volunteer in some other way, is that, that makes it, that's a convenient way to dismiss it. Because then, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not that you're saying, oh, Beth, we can't do this, you're saying, oh, we can't find people who will do this with you, because we're going to go and ask the people who are already working really hard. Now, sometimes when you want something done, you go and ask the person who's really busy. But I think part of the strength of this model is that it makes it possible to expand who you ask considerably. I mean, there, there were a lot of people at this meeting who were concerned about the ordinance. That might be a good place to start. Here's a, here's an alternative on a volunteer. And not simply say, well, let's go to the service clubs, and let's go to the churches, and let's go to the people who are already volunteering. So, you know.
Well, it's a catch-22. If you don't have volunteers, whether you're viewed as being dismissive or not, the program won't work.
Indeed.
So you've got to have the volunteers, and where do we all? You know, if you want to get something done, ask a busy man. Don't ask a lazy man. So that's why we always go back to the same volunteers, saying, hey, can you do more? Because they're the ones building this city, and they always have.
I understand that. I'm just trying to shift the, shift the conversation, or shift the focus a little bit, so that we also find ways to incorporate people who maybe would like to be busy.
Right.
And I, you know, I, I am, I'm serious, too, about, you know, if the, if the, if the council wanted to authorize a modest honorarium for a college kid that I could, you know, recruit and find to work with me on this, that'd be great. We can find out whether, you know, what kind of grant, grant money is out there, what kinds of, you know, community organizations. We can make sure that all the community organizations that have, that are stakeholders in making Berry a better place and serving members of the community are at least approached about this, and find, you know, ask them the question, you know, how, can this help? And if, if it can, then how? And if it can't, do you want us to just leave you alone? You know? So.
What's a modest honorarium?
I don't know. I mean, I'm just pulling, you know, figures out of my head here. Maybe $1,200?
You just described our budget for the entire neighborhood meeting series.
Well, you know, less.
Have to, have to think about that, what they, you know, what they would do. I mean, would they just look for grants, or?
Depends a little bit on who it is. And what they're, you know, for an internship thing to work, it has to be something that they get, that the student is interested in pursuing. If they're interested in finding out about grants, that's going to be one of the places they focus, if they're interested in, you know, exploring the, the union issues around whether or not we can, you know, use volunteers in this way. That would be stuff that they would look at. I mean, you can give me the, give me a kid, and I'll pump to work.
No, and, and I get it. It's hard to do it when it's, you know, when it's on budget. It's just hard to find any money when it's unbudgeted. So I guess, you know, the way I feel about this, I like the idea. The city, I've heard concerns from the manager and others, that having the city have ownership, so to speak, of the program could be a bit problematic because of the liability exposure. That's not really that hard to get around. We've had to do that before, and we get around it, you know, with the warming shelter. City didn't run the warming shelter, we simply provided an appropriation in the budget so that the warming shelter could happen. So, I look at this as sort of the same way. You know, we wouldn't necessarily, we could provide the same level of training. Dispatch takes calls from anyone when they call, and they triage every day. So I hope, you know, we keep, and like I said to you, the, why can't we do both? It doesn't have to be either or.
Right. I, I agree.
Yeah. Bern, did you have a follow-up comment?
Well, I just wanted to say that I understand how, you know, our budget works, but this, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about money that the BOR had, and that it was at their discretion to spend. It was, I think they had $183,000. And there are other places where we have money. I remembered you saying that we had money when we spent the, when we said that we would put $400,000 to the project downtown. It seems like something that's $1,000 or $1,500 is really not that big of a pot of money. If we could be really specific and target what we want to do, and I think that grant writing is a really good place to have somebody working, because that's how they, they pay for themselves, and then they pay it forward, and then that money comes back to us. And when Amanda, you were talking about, I'm looking at you, because I have this kind of funny, different view than you have of me. You mentioned that, about working with city staff to get this grant that you just helped write. So it's a collaboration, and, and so let Councilor Hillgartner go home and think about it, and then let's see if we can find a little bit of money from our, our funds that we have for things in the city, because it feels like this is a really positive thing, and it's a positive way to move forward. It's a place where we could get more funds to support something that's forward-moving. And I thank you for allowing me to share so late in the evening.
Thank you.
Nicholas? If I just might, yeah, a lot, we have funds that are restricted, we have funds that are limited to use, we have funds that have, you know, they're a bequest, for example, that might have strings on how it can be spent. So I, I would just caution against that. I, I just, you know, I hate to be the, the, that person, but, you know, as far, I don't know if there's ever been a case where a council has been given a budget to work on a policy issue, mayor, but I would, I would say that if you do it for one council, any council who has a, an issue that they'd want to work on could rightfully request the same resources. I know councils get a stipend, which they may use for however they wish, so that could be a resource. I know councils who've put in a lot of time of their own, out of their day, to, to do the, the work they've been doing. So I, I just, I'm not saying what to do or not to do, I'm just saying that if you do, do that, you know, if a council has an issue they'd like to work on, we would have to extend that same courtesy to them. I, again, I'm not, I'm not, I haven't been here long enough to know if it's been, done in the past, but I would just, I hate to be the person to have to raise that stuff, but.
Nope.
Felt obligated to.
Thank you, Nicholas.
That's why you make, that's why you make more than $1,500 a year. And some of us don't make anything at all. Jerry?
It'd be great.
I think, I just wanted to say, like, I, I find the budgetary concern a little bit weird. I mean, we just committed $100,000 towards cameras. It seems like there's, you know, when there's initiatives that are intended towards punitive measures and various other projects, we're able to find the resources, and, you know, obviously, there would need to be more done to flesh out the exact contours of this, but when we're talking on the order of $1,500, even 10 times that amount for an initiative to really try to build up our community, that seems like it's money that should be, that, it seems strange that that's even a concern, given the budgetary process and the outlays that the city has, has recently engaged in. I, I find that kind of mystifying, to be honest, for, especially for such a positive initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council, yes?
So, having been part of lots of volunteer opportunities, and, and I'm working with one now, I would say, I would suggest that perhaps an inventory, I know you've spoken to organizations and people running organizations, but wouldn't it be great to do an inventory of all the volunteering that's happening in this city now? And that would be a way to point out that Berry is an incredibly heavy volunteer-populated city and, and community. And if you did an inventory of it, then you could celebrate actually what is happening now as a way, as a juggernaut for maybe doing some more things. But I think really, looking at what is happening now, because it's kind of amazing, and I've never seen a community like this. I, I'm not saying that it shouldn't grow, and it shouldn't move into places, but do that inventory first. It'll, it would be a great way to see everything that's happening. And then, then you get this, this, you might find that it doesn't need the city to be doing this. It might need the city to say, go for it, you know, we'll do a resolution, or whatever. But it might be that it is completely grassroots.
Thank you. So, council, upcoming business. Anything anyone would like to see on the agenda besides the neighborly Berry, Berry Initiative? Hear that loud and clear? Yes?
Two things related to flood resiliency. One, my standing offer to any councilors, now that we're in a new iteration of the plan, if there are any sections of that plan you would like to see updated in a certain time or fashion, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'll be meeting with the manager, surprise, in the coming weeks, to set the schedule for updates through the summer, now that we have the projects ahead of us. So please, don't hesitate to reach out, and same offer goes for any member of the public. Really love to know what's happening with this project. We will, we will work the schedule to get that updated. The second is that, also related to flood resiliency, sort of, I intend to bring forward a resolution at our next council meeting on July 1st to remove the date of July 10th from the city calendar, so that we no longer flood on the day of July 10th. So, I'm just giving you a heads up, that is coming for you in our next meeting.
Well, that'd be interesting. So, council, I'll be calling some special meetings of the council, I mean, now that legis- the legislature has finally gone home, I've been working with ACCD, the Department, Agency of Commerce and Community Development, to secure basically technical assistance, knowing that the CDBGDR funds are going to be available, you know, and the state of Vermont plans on starting to award money as soon as October. It's, for all intents and purposes, it's July. You know, summer's over, in case you haven't noticed. Doesn't seem that way, but that's the way it goes in Vermont. July 4th comes, and then summer's over, and we're right there. So, you know, over the next 30 days, Nicholas, you don't have to be there, I mean, city staff, you have families, but I want to start having those conversations, those serious conversations. The trestle party was great, don't get me wrong. You worked very hard on it, and I appreciated it, but we need to start having the serious conversations about, look, what is the North End going to look like? We're not going to please everybody. Not everybody is going to agree with us, but we're not going to use disagreement as an excuse to stall and not move forward. Because this is the best opportunity, in terms of funding, funding opportunity, this is the best opportunity that the city of Berry will see in a very, very long time. What was the 24? The CDBGDR funds, 23 flood, were 68 million. Well, I got a glimpse of the 24, it was like 22?
Ballpark, yeah.
It was a small number. It was like 22 million, you know, for impacted communities, so, and of that 68, they expect over 50 to come to Washington County. And with all due respect, and all respect for our friends in Plainfield, Plainfield was not a 23-affected community. They're not eligible. They were a 24-affected community, but not a 23. So when you think about Washington County, $55 million, the loss of housing in the city of Berry, we can make that case, that, and again, I love my neighbors in Montpelier, but I'm not the mayor of Montpelier. Guess who I'm going to be advocating for? We lost housing, everybody lost something, but we lost a lot of housing, and they've also made it clear that they're going to focus on housing. So this is just such a great opportunity. We're gonna, we're gonna have to get to work and probably attend at least one council meeting a week, just to listen to people and to make sure we're prepared to move forward. So, I hope you all enjoyed summer, so. We gotta get back to work. Roundtable, Council Ruth here. Council Spalding.
I went to Pride, it was amazing. I'm so glad that the committee who put that together did such a great job. I'm glad it's growing. It's really great to see so many people in the park. I got to participate in the Pride rides, and I know the founder of that organization, and he is amazing, and I'm just glad that I was able to participate.
Council Ruth, you're on.
Thanks for the tour of the wastewater plant, water plant, last Friday. And some good news on the front here, the Berry Community Baseball has been awarded the District Four tournaments again this year. This'll be two years in a row. They'll be playing their games up at Bond Field, right up by our new, our new DPW building.
Nice.
And they'll be playing a second field in, behind Berry Town School.
Nice. Council Guston.
I want to say thank you to Nicholas for arranging the wastewater.
Great.
That was really fascinating.
That's fun. Council Derry?
Well, summer officially started for all of our schoolchildren today, even though our summer officially ended today. Nice change. So we'll shift workloads from school to council, but really just be cognizant of our community and the kiddos that are around, that we need to lead by example, specifically here on council, and as adults in our community. So I'll leave with that.
Nice. So, I enjoyed Pride, well, Pride Week, really, as well. The bake sale was amazing, there were all kinds of goodies there. Council Guston, thank you again for the trestle party. You know, you did the heavy lifting. I brought a little food, but really, you did the heavy lifting, literally with the grill. But it was, no, it was nice to see people there, and enjoying themselves, talking a little bit about the North End, and, yeah, they don't let me have a stick, so I couldn't take a whack at the trestle.
We offered up beautiful weapons.
I know, but Peter Anthony earned it, and Karen couldn't resist, so we had the first lady, even though I, usually if she grabs a stick, I run. But no, we had a great time. It was just a fun, it was a fun afternoon, just to sort of engage with people, so I appreciate that. And then lastly, I'm working on the freaking train horn, okay? I'm working on it. I'm having calls with the railroad, and the secretary, and all the people who say, well, by law, they can't blow it for more than four seconds. That's actually not accurate. If they perceive a threat, if they perceive that someone is not paying attention at the intersection, they can lay on that sucker for 20 seconds or more, if they want to.
It did today.
So, I'm trying. I'm just trying to get to the bottom of, when can they blow the horn, and for how long, and when can they start? You know, sometimes when they start at 6:00 AM, honestly, that's a little much.
Also, the gusto is parking. If somebody is blocking it at all, that's what we listen to, is laying down the horn, trying to get the person who's in gusto.
There's no reason for someone to park there. Yeah. So, so I'm working on it. So all the folks, and I get it, I mean, there are a lot of people who really don't like, you know, the decibel level really bothers them. And I'm working on it. I'm really, really working on it. And so with that, council, I don't believe we need an executive session, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, we adjourn tonight. Thank you very much, everyone.